Welcome to the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Board Meeting. We're doing this as a hybrid meeting with both remote and local process. So the usual procedures apply if you want to participate in your out there. Uh, let's take a.
We'll go. Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Present.
I am here, and Mr. Hassenger.
I'm here.
And staff present is Town Planner Fiona Coughlin.
Here.
And Mr. Hassenger, of course.
Yeah.
I think I've said you already.
Maybe this is working, I don't know. Okay. Um. First item on our agenda, as usual, is public input. If there's anyone who has something to say to us that regarding something in our purview that is not otherwise on the agenda, this is your time.
Good evening, John Stevens. I'm a member of the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission, and I'm here just to kind of make sure that the issue of the tree barn, it's part of a project for the redevelopment of the former DBW site, they tied that into the tree barn as a single, I guess, to sell everything to the developer. And at an Affordable Housing Trust meeting, there was a discussion by the developer potentially demolishing the building, and I just wanted to make sure that the Historic District Commission and the Historical Commission both had an opportunity to have input. I've been working with a group that's actually interested in trying to restore the barn, so I want it to be a win for the town because this is, it's not, it's literally on the line of the district. The district ends at the railroad tracks, and the building is immediately over the railroad tracks, but it's a gateway into the common district, and so to preserve as much of the historical integrity and fabric of that neighborhood is our goal, and rather than have a parking lot, if there's a use for that building and it can be justified in saving it and that it can be actually saved, both the Historical Commission and District would like to see that.
How close to the right-of-way is the barn?
It's right on the road in terms, there's a sidewalk, and there may be, it's less than, in which way?
I'm talking about when the engineer draws the line on the plan, I wouldn't be surprised if it was in the, in the right-of-way.
Because it's right on the road and the railroad tracks are literally.
Right-of-way is wider than the.
Right, no, but I mean, it's, there's a sidewalk, and then there's still a little bit of green space, but not a whole lot.
But we don't, I think the right-of-way includes part of this, at least part of the sidewalk at the end.
Right.
So, anyway, that, the question is, I'm not sure we know what permitting path, if any, that will take.
Well, that's what I'm trying to make sure before any discussions are, I, since there have been discussions of potentially removing the building. That part of the initial plan, and I know that that's gone through a couple of different phases, that they, I don't know that they promised, but that they had put in the RFP or they put in something that they would do, a beer garden, or they would try to repurpose that building. So.
Maybe.
But at any rate, we don't want to get the project going too far to where we can't, even if somebody said, I have $10 million to do the building, that's like go too late, we've already have, we already have another plan. So I'm just trying to make sure that those two organizations are not, or committees, town committees aren't left out of the discussion.
Yeah, well, we can, you know, pass through that we've heard about it until it comes to us in actual permitting form, you know, special permit or some, something. There isn't a whole lot that we can do, we can't, we can't force it to come here if, if it's not.
But if they come to you with the plan, I'm just trying to make sure the radar, everybody's antenna are up, that it's on the radar, that it's, that this isn't a forgotten building because DBW moved out and is no longer utilizing the building, you know, that, that it still has a purpose, and we'd like to try to exhaust all possibilities before the wrecking ball. Because the, the week that I found out about this, a house in a barn on Providence Road came down, and then fortunately only half of a barn on Millbury Street, across from the Millbury Street School, came down, I guess, there, at only half of it, they tore down. So we're losing our barns, and this is right in the center of town, and it actually has a very interesting history, so.
We'll, we'll save the history for another night.
Right, but just.
Okay, well, that's.
Maybe make you a little more interested.
That's the sort of thing that I think of our public input as being good for.
Great, well, I appreciate it, thank you. And Fiona, I've been communicating with Fiona, so she knew, but I took, I wanted you guys as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Is there any, any other public comment?
Good evening, I'm Jim Brown with, and I own Primary Colors at Nine Millennium Drive, and I, I was told that the, that there was a, that Five Millennium Drive was on the docket tonight, but it doesn't appear to be. I know the application was filed for the 40R.
It is under, it's a discussion item for us tonight, it's just the, you know, proposed zoning change 40R.
Great.
So it's our first discussion item on the agenda.
Oh, great, okay. While I'm, while I have the platform, I just.
We'll, we'll get in, since it is on the.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Okay. Draft decision, one Meadow Lane.
I'll say I've read this, I didn't see anything that stuck, stuck out to me, so in, I'll make the motion now that we approve the draft decision as drafted with all findings and waivers in the positive outcome.
I'll second that. And yes, like you just, I, I read through it, and it's a routine accessory apartment decision. There's nothing about this that was any different than others, and the draft decision looks like it's in order.
What's the password for the what?
Grafton two zero one three. Grafton twenty thirteen with a capital G.
Twenty thirteen. Thirteen. Why it worked last time? Okay, was, was there a motion?
Yes, and it was seconded.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veckatraman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger?
Aye. Motion carries. It's working. Okay, determination of minor modification for Eight Pine Street.
So I know that there is representative here this evening, Sarah Stein, who will be speaking to this, but the folks that were originally proposing Eight Pine have asked for an extension, they've asked for an extension for the commencement of construction date, which subsequently affects the date for the temporary certificate of occupancy. I did check with formerly DHCD, now EOHLC, and this will not pose any adverse impacts on our 40R designation in terms of timelines, so that checked out. But I will say that in, the board will need to make a determination of the changes minor or major, so there will be, so that, that's, will dictate the, the next steps, but I want to give the applicant a chance to, to speak.
Is the request in the meeting materials?
It's, it's.
Yeah.
Under the meeting materials, not in the project page.
Hi, my name's Sarah Stein, I'm with O'Connell Development Group, we're the applicant for Eight Pine Street. We're really just looking for another year to get started on this, there's been some changes both in the market with construction lead times, a few things that have delayed the project, we still intend to move forward, forward with the project as planned. As Fiona noted, in terms of the funding from the state, you know, nothing should change there, and we intend to be well within that required date of 2025 to have a building permit. So it's, no changes, just a, just another year.
Yeah, but there's, there was some question that came by. Fiona, was there, there was a, we were talking about a question on, on process here.
Yes, the major versus minor, for the zoning by law, the board will need to make a determination of what they believe would be.
Yeah, and.
If this would constitute a major, or well, a modification versus a minor modification.
Was there a question of the date we received it?
Oh, yes, that's right, there was, the date of the permit was originally due, I believe, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have it right in front of me, and I'm showing my screen now, but I believe that was early July, July ninth was supposed to be the, July ninth, twenty twenty-three was supposed to be the construction commencement date.
And.
So.
And the request for an extension came in.
Shortly thereafter, I believe it was the fourteenth.
But it was after?
Yes, it was after, yes.
Yeah, because our policy, I think, has been mostly that you at least had to get your request in before your date ran out, your date, you know, your, your permit is, is expired before you requested the continuation, extension, so.
Yeah, I understand, I, I noted that, or noticed that myself. We'd had some changes in staff, I had, you know, been looking, reached out to Fiona, and you're right, we were a week, week after.
We just turned down a request from someone for, when their engineer made a mistake and they get brought in the wrong A and R.
Sure.
And we didn't, we didn't even let him get by without going through the process and paying another fee. Does, how do, how does everybody else feel?
I, I don't recall, it's my time on the board, a, you know, deadline change being, you know, voted as a minor, you know, that's one thing that I don't recall us doing that for sure.
We may have, but, but it was following the.
Yeah.
At least following the, the practice.
Does this have any impact on the towns, like Safe Harbor or anything like that?
She was just saying.
Not at this point.
If you, if you look through, I think that you reported, you talked all the alphabet about it, and at this point, it's okay, as far as that goes.
I will, I would point out that approximately a year ago, we gave them granted an extension as a minor modification.
Thank you.
But that was when they were in time.
That was on August eighth. Our, our action on that was August eighth.
So it must, the request must have come in.
Presumably the credit, there was, I mean, on, my, my notes are, of course, not, not anywhere near complete, but in my notes on that meeting, I did note that we, it was a meeting of August eighth, and it was voted as a minor modification.
I would.
We'd have to go back and look and see when the, when it was received.
I would guess if it came on our agenda as a minor a year ago, and we voted on August eighth, it was probably after that, you know, July date, if that was similar then.
What was the July date?
This year was July eighth.
Yeah, no, no, but the.
The previous one, I don't know.
The ninth. So the, the changes requested are changing from July ninth, twenty twenty-three to July ninth, twenty twenty-four.
We'll be trying to figure out about a precedent, but, well.
Prior minor modification, as Dave was mentioning, was submitted, that was approved as a minor modification on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, which amended condition C six to, that was changing the development to occur in two phases, as well as.
Yes, there was more.
Yes.
There was more than simply a date.
There was more than a timeline change there, yes.
What does the board want to do?
I'll move that the board find that this is a minor modification.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
I think my only comment is, you know, even if I have faulty memory, it, it sounds like this is less in scope than what we did last time, and we voted as a minor last time.
Yeah, I still don't know whether they made the date.
Yeah.
For the request.
And I.
And I'm getting, you know, we, you're not the only one in our, in our, what we're doing these days, talking about building affordable housing that would help our safe harbor status and not doing it, not getting any of it, I'm getting kind of weary personally, so. Anybody else? Let's take a vote.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veckatraman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger?
Nay. That motion carries, that was to find it a minor modification and granted.
The only thing I said was find a minor modification.
Right, all right, now.
Move that the board grant the, or approve the minor modification and issue the necessary documentation.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veckatraman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger?
Nay.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Good luck. Okay. All right. Okay. Proposed zoning change 40R district. We're just talking about it, we're not, it hasn't become an art, a warrant article, and we're not having, this is not the zoning hearing that we will have, assuming it does go forward.
No, this, this is a follow-up to our conversation at our last meeting, and as well as a follow-up, a second follow-up to the Select Board hearing to, for, to submit the application for the Subzone B amendment, Mark came last time and discussed with the board, but today was really more to kind of get a little bit more in-depth with any specific comments or concerns that we had, and to hash those out now before we take the next step. With that being said, I have not heard back yet from the state, the application was submitted following the Select Board meeting, and I have not, other than a confirmation that the application was received, I have not heard any other follow-up.
So we're going to do a presentation?
I do have a presentation that I can share, it is the same that Mr. Bobrowski gave prior, so let me pull that up, and I will allow Mark and also Mr. Lovett to take, go, take it and remember.
Okay, as you're getting ready, I'm not sure whether it was clear, but in case anybody is here for the 124 Westboro Road, they've requested a continuation to the twenty-eighth, so we won't be talking about it, assuming the board grants the request, we won't be doing anything with that one tonight. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Mark Bobrowski, I'm the counsel for the applicant, or your co-applicant, I should say, Town is the applicant, for amendment to the North Grafton Transit Village overlay district, and that amendment would create a sub-district B. You may have seen this PowerPoint before, I'm going to go through it quickly because I think that's the case. I've also got teed up and ready to share screen, a clean version of the zoning bylaw that we've submitted to the state, and a, a second document, which is design standards for the sub-district B, which have also been submitted to the state. So without further ado, and joining me this evening is Bill Lovett, he's the Director of Development for Claremont, who will ultimately be your applicant for a plan approval. So between the two of us, we're happy to answer any questions. Fiona, if you could move on to the next slide. This is the proposed project, it's 233 units, it's located at Five Millennium in Grafton, it's adjacent to the MBTA station. The building will be, it's five stories, there's obvious amenities that Bill can detail for you as we go through, next slide. So I'm sure most of you know this already, but 40R is housing production oriented, it doesn't, you can have mixed use, but state's really interested in the housing, and it's a program that was developed in the oh-four, oh-five period. The thinking was that there are so many eligible locations going without attention, the, the actual genesis of this was a gentleman by the name of Ted Carmen, who ran Commonwealth Development, he got off at every train stop from Melrose North and said, what are we doing? And so he came up with the, the basic idea behind chapter 40R. The key is the next slide, and that's location, so eligible locations include a half mile from any rapid transit rail station, here's your niche, areas of concentrated development, that would probably be the other sub-zone A, in that it's a concentrated former state hospital, and then category three is highly suitable, don't need to worry about here, but that's, I like to say that that's something that didn't fit in number one or number two, but the state likes it anyway. Go ahead. Here's an example of a location near transit, I've been April 40R lawyer, lawyer since they developed the downtown under 40R in two thousand six, seven, the brand-new train station, I think they've received over 1.6 million dollars in funding under chapter 40R, it's been an enormous success, I invite you to go to Washington Street for dinner some night, it's a remarkable recovery by the former shoe city. Go ahead. This is Lincoln Park in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, is still evolving, started right around the same time period, I remember walking under the roller coaster when I took my first site visit, it's about 315 units, it's mixed use, and there are some sections of it which are exclusively multifamily, and a new single-family sub-district was amended into the mix about eight or 10 years ago. Go ahead. This is Kelly Boulevard in North Attleboro, it was approved last fall by the City Council of North Attleboro, North Attleboro's become a city form of government, it's about 315 units, again, on about 11 acres of land, it's right at the Plainville Line, it's at the site of a former driving range, and it was an interesting project in that the, the improvements that were most called for were transit and highway repairs under the, the one-stop grant program, which was linked to this. Go ahead. So this is you, the North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District, Subdistrict B, we're right on the, on the parking lot of the train, train station, 10.73 acre parcel, it's currently vacant, and there's access to public water and sewer. Next slide. This shows you the relationship of the previously existing sub-district A to sub-district B, it is part of the same 40R district as far as the state is concerned, although having had conversations with Bill about whether or not there will be money available for sub-district B, he assured me that there would be. But this gives you kind of a view from an airplane as to the relation of the two sub-districts. Next slide. This is the actual close-up of the parcel, you, the dashed line on the left-hand side is a property that has been put under agreement with the neighbor, the gentleman spoke earlier during the public discussion stage, the rest of the parcel is, it's map, I can't read it, it's one H, I think, it's lot one H. And there's a small, yeah, there's a small wetland area with an upland area inside of it, the, the upland total includes the upland area within the wetland resource area, it just simplifies the math, and so the entire cumulative sub-zone area is 10.73 acres, the, the upland area for building purposes that we're claiming is 9.00, I think it's actually 9.02. Next slide. So in a smart growth district under chapter 40R, any multifamily requires a minimum density of 20 units per acre, these are not wavable, it's 12 units per acre for a townhouse district, which is limited to two and three family dwellings, and eight units per acre for single-family use, so we're proposing the 20-unit-per-acre option here. Next slide. These are just some pictures that illustrate the density at eight, 12, and 20 units per acre, next slide. The sub-district B density is 9.02 developable, developable acres, there are 233 dwelling units proposed, and so the proposed density for 40R purposes is 25.83 units an acre, this is just a function of the math, how much land do you have, what is your building design? And for example, in downtown Haverhill, we had an existing eight- or 10-story building owned by New York Reit, we put it into the district, subtracted 20% of the building out for open space, elevator shafts as such, it's on a one-acre parcel, so the proposed density there was, I think, over 200 units an acre, and it's just a function of the math. Go ahead. This is the proposed project, you can see five stories above grade, there's another slide that shows floor plans, I believe. Bill, Bill can go into the, Bill can go more into the details of the actual architecture amenities program that Claremont is proposing. So as I said, the mapping of the district is basically a function of dividing the land into developable, substantially developed or non-developable, for our purposes, because it's a 10.73 acre sub-district, and we have 75,000 square feet plus or minus of wetlands, the easiest thing to do was declare all the upland 9.02 acres as buildable, even though nobody will ever build on that island in the wetland area, but for calculation purposes and mapping purposes, it just works simply, and we don't have to mess around with anything else. Done this before, we did this in North Attleboro as well, we, we didn't even claim the wetlands, we just went forward with everything being developable. Go ahead. That's the proposed sub-district map that you've seen already, but this is now a part of the zoning bylaw. Go ahead. The zoning is generally now a template, since the last time you did this in 2018, it's gotten even more routinized, the state has a base document, which you must track change in order to submit to Bill Rail, who was the Program Director at DHCD, and in the template are things like affordability requirements, that's the dominant feature of the bylaw, but it also has a description of the plan approval process, waiver and amendment authority and procedures, and then it gets more particular to the project, so there's, as in your sub-district A, there are types of uses that are allowed by right or by special permit, here it's exclusively multifamily, and there are also dimensional density and parking requirements and design standard and guidelines. All of this is subject to review at DHCD, there was a little bit of a, an interesting template, if you will, because the town didn't wait to get the approval by DHCD back in 2018, before it put it on the warrant and voted in the zoning amendments, there were some things that the state wanted to change, nothing more than basically nomenclature, but the template that I inherited is actually DHCD's fixes to the 2018 base document. Go ahead. So the affordability requirements here are that 20% of the units. So the affordability requirements here are that 20% of the units must be affordable in a project of more than 12 units. In a housing project which is exclusively rental and for all the units to count on the subsidized housing inventory, 25% of the units must be affordable. This project has the unique distinction of being one of the first MBTA community projects that is going forward in the state. The MBTA program at DHCD is not the same as the 40R program, and they've ruled more or less that they don't want to see anything greater in 40R than 20% of the units as affordable because they think it's a disincentive in the usual case. And I, I believe we're going to have a conversation about that at some point tonight. But the, 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 there's a reversal of, of the burden of proof here. It's on the, normally, and I've done 15 40Rs before, every other rental project I've done did do 25% of the units as affordable so that all of them would count. But the enactment of the MBTA communities program, two and a half years ago, has changed that in the eyes of the state. When you, when you take a step back and you look at the progress under chapter 40R and the progress that they want to make under MBTA, it's very clear that they put their eggs in the MBTA basket. Had a conversation with Bill Rail, the program director, not that long ago. I called him to talk about a project that I had forthcoming in Attleboro. And he said, you know, Mark, this is nice. It's project driven by a developer, small parcel, but when I look around, I see other parcels that could be included in the district. And that would make for a more, from a planning perspective, a more comprehensive approach under chapter 40R. And I didn't disagree with him, but I don't represent any of those other people and they had never been approached and probably would, would be, I wouldn't say against, but they'd probably be hesitant to buy into it. And I pointed out that in fact, if you do this like Grafton has done it, eventually it will come to that. Sub district A was six, seven years ago. Here we are with sub district B. So Bill gets his wish and the politics of this are a little bit easier. But MBTA, make no, make no bones about it. MBTA is the way the state wants to go because it wants the, the housing providibility programs to be comprehensive in nature. And 40R has not been as successful in that comprehensiveness as they would like. So go ahead. The chief official of the municipality has already held a public hearing and they have decided that the application should be submitted. The application is Grafton's, it's not Claremont's. Claremont is the obvious partner of Grafton in the process, but the application was signed by the chief executive official of the town. This goes as it has already to Bill Rail at DHCD. He's got 90 days to look at it. And in three, upon a preliminary determination of eligibility, this would come back to you at the planning board for a public hearing for the zoning. And if the zoning is enacted after the governor's housing amendments of two years ago, it's now a 50% plus one vote. It's no longer a two thirds vote a town meeting. Next slide. Following adoption of the 40R district, there's a payment that comes out to the municipality. More on that in a second. More importantly, the applicant is then free to apply for what's known as plan approval. Next slide. So assuming that the approval by DHCD will not have a prerequisite for payment, for example, if there's a sidewalk that they want constructed in order to promote pedestrian safety before they give you a check, the first payment will be for a slot between 201 and 500 net new units. This is all zone, non-residential, so there aren't any residential units allowed there today. And that slot payment, zoning incentive payment will yield $350,000 to the town. Next slide. The additional payments are density bonus payments of $3,000 for each unit constructed within the smart growth district that are net new units. So with 233 units times 3,000, the next slide shows you the math. $350,000 as a zoning incentive payment, 233 times 3,000 is $699,000. Total payments at the town of Grafton after the issuance of the building permit for 233 units will be about 1.05 million dollars. Next slide. There's just some resource information if you're interested. You know, I think this is a, a project that's quite attractive to the town. In some cases, 1.05 million dollars isn't worth the money. It's only a one-time payment. If the project is not a good project, then I, I think it speaks for itself that you should think hard about whether or not you need the money. But here, I think, given the proximity to sub district A and the proximity even more so to the train station and the eligibility of these units for MBTA communities, it makes for, we're hoping that you'll see this as a very worthwhile project. I'm happy to answer any questions and Bill can of course weigh in here on design related issues and finances.
So just some very brief thoughts out of, from, from me on this is number one, I think this is a, you know, overall nice design. I think this will be a benefit to, to Grafton. I do have a high level concerns. There's been a lot of development that's gotten approvals and is in the process of trying to get approvals within like a half mile of this location, all centered to kind of run the same intersections. So I'm, I'm interested in this, trying to figure out, it may not be, you know, this project to just, to be involved in, you know, solving that necessarily, but you know, how we will make sure that, that traffic patterns stay, you know, at least, you know, meaningful for people to have to travel through this area, you know, especially people in the rest of Grafton that want to access the train station just because of, you know, the increased development in this, you know, section of town. Like I said, I don't know that that's necessarily something that you have to solve with this project. It's just a overall thought I had. Another kind of, you know, thought with this is one thing that might be beneficial, just seeing exactly how this lines up with, you know, the MBTA station itself is seeing if the state would allow like some sort of connecting pathway from this, you know, parcel itself down to the train, you know, MBTA parking lot for like pedestrian use, for people that might be living here that would want to catch the train. That seems like an ample opportunity instead of having to, you know, go all the way around Millennium, you know, and then down Pine Street to get to the train station, you know. And so many of those people might not want to do that, that far of a walk and would take their vehicle when they could easily just walk, you know, through a pathway. But that's not something that we can mandate considering the train station is not our choice. But, and then the only thing I just wanted to kind of reiterate is, you know, yes, you only need 20%, but I would be interested in, you know, what avenues might be considerable for, you know, increasing that to, you know, higher. Like I'm not as concerned myself with the safe harbor designation, but I am interested in increasing the number of affordable units we have in town.
May I address the gentleman's concerns, Mr. Chairman? May I address his concerns?
Oh, sure.
Okay. I, I didn't know if you wanted to wait till the end or do this as comments are made. There will be a full TIAS, the traffic impact access study at the plan approval stage. So any, we'll be using a professional engineer who's well skilled in this area. And obviously that's going to be presented to the PAA and I expect that the planning board will be the PAA. So you'll get a bite at that traffic apple down the road. Pedestrian connection to the MBTA, we'll certainly explore that. That's, that's what it's all about. We want to eliminate cars. And if people can walk to the train station safely, that's part of the, part of the project that we're trying to design here.
Wonderful.
Okay. Anybody else up here?
Prabhu has his hand up.
Oh, Prabhu.
Hey, Bob. Hey, Mark. So two parts of the question. The first part was what Justin had raised in terms of pedestrian access, but also in, when you plan for it, are you planning for enough parking spots in this location? Assumption that they, the people who will be living here will not be taking the car to get on the train, but they would still have a car to park it. That's one. The second question is probably to you, probably to the others too. What you have the, what is the maximum number of units that can be constructed? Can this be instead of five floors? Can this be 15 floors? Do we get 700 units and say 25% of those? Do we get 170 affordable units? So is there a, is there a upper cap in terms of how many, what's the maximum number of units or what's the maximum height?
Well, what we've proposed is what we'd like to build, which is this project. It's 203, 33 units and it's five stories. So we're not seeking to make the density of the developable acreage, again, nine for discussion purposes, any greater than 25 and change. I mean, you could propose a, you know, a 20 story building here, but this is what Claremont wants to build.
Yeah. If I, if I may, I think I have some useful information in that respect. That is the existing North Grafton Transit Village 40R district. And this is seeking to simply extend that. But the existing district has no upper limit on the number of units per acre, but it does have other parameters that limit the density. And those parameters, in particular, I will note that it's five stories is, is the, is the limit in this 40R district, the existing limit. So that, carrying that over to the sub zone, to the new sub zone B, which is what's being proposed, basically limits it to the five stories. Furthermore, I will note that some of the other parameters proposed for sub zone B are really tuned towards this specific development. It's in terms of the, particularly in terms of the, the, the limit on units per developable acre of 26. That combined with the height limit, well, even just, just the 26 per acre as an upper bound, you know, independent of any height considerations, that limits the maximum number of units in this particular district to approximately 233. I, I will make a comment that if, if I were planning an expansion of this 40R without a specific project in mind, I would probably have included in sub zone B multifamily as an, I mean, mixed use as an allowable use. And I would probably have set the upper limit on density to something larger. That, that would be approaching it without a specific project in mind. But as it is, let's just reiterate that the parameters of this proposed sub zone B are really specific to this project or a project that's roughly comparable to that in terms of number of units and building height.
Yeah. That's, that's a concern to me. You're, you're writing a zoning bylaw that suits what you currently think you're going to want to do. But as we've seen on all these projects, things aren't happening the way they, someone wants them to happen. And so I, when, when we look at this, I'm going to have to look at what you're leaving open, especially with, well, what you're leaving open that could happen. And that's, that's going to be a bit of an issue. Before we get to, we're going to hear a little bit of the concern from someone. The, the 25% zoning is important for me. One way or another, one of these projects is going to start producing units that we can count. And then the traffic issue, yeah, there are like at least three, maybe more projects all centered around the train station. And getting through the Pine Street, that's the Pine Street intersection and allowing foot traffic paths gets lost in that each of the projects by themselves doesn't push far enough to get as much as might be needed. So it's, it's the last one in, I guess, who'll see, I need to do a lot of work. And you, I, I want you to think about what we can do and, and so on, because yes, that intersection, it was improved when the, the railroad bridge was put in and that intersection was rebuilt. But it's not, you know, it was improved to something that's got nothing to do with what we're talking about there now. Okay.
One other, one, one other comment I'll make is that this project and this zoning, in fact, the, the zoning to facilitate this or a similar project, if this one should ultimately, you know, not proceed, the zoning, the proposed zoning is very much in line, you know, with the North Grafton Transit Village strategic plan that was done in, completed in 2017. It identified among other things, it identified the general vicinity of this parcel, the eight Pine Street parcel and other parcels around it as good opportunities for multifamily and mixed use development. So the proposal to include this in 40R is completely in line with that strategic plan.
I, I'm just worried about what you're opening up, how much you're opening up to that you, we might not be analyzing because we're interested in, in the MBTA aspect and so on. Okay. Now?
Thank you, folks. Again, Jim Brown. I own Primary Colors, which is directly next door. I don't own the building or the land. And there was a reference to that slice of land being under agreement. That might be an overstatement of, you know, that's semantics, but to my understanding, there's no agreement in place to sell that. I know it's been under, it's been in the works. I'm tilting at the windmill here because I know it's considered a good project and, and if I wasn't a manufacturer directly next to it, I would agree with you. My understanding is another manufacturer moving in across the street from that with plans to build. And just understand, we came to Grafton with the understanding, this is a light manufacturing district, not a residential district. They're going to be very close to our building. That's 233 units of who knows what variables. As I've mentioned before, that's a daunting situation for a manufacturer to have, you know, to be in a neighborhood. We would not have put ourselves in that position initially. The question, I, I wanted a, a point of clarification. If the land that was, that was marked off there sold, the, the, the density number that was reported tonight, I'm, I'm clear whether that's assuming that land is sold or if it's not. I'd like that clarified. But again, I, I, I'd be remiss, I'm here just to, just to throw out that there is somebody else involved here. We have sensitive equipment, there's going to be a ton of blasting that's going to have to happen at this site, if you're familiar with it. And it's a concern. So I'm here to register that and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? When, when the legislation finally gets drafted and it's time for it to be adopted by the town, well, the zoning will come here for a hearing and everyone will have a formal hearing opportunity. So the, this is all, this is the beginning, I think, for us.
Yeah. And I'll just say that, you know, I think this, you know, zoning and the proposed project as a whole looks, you know, good to me. I will say that when it comes, you know, we have a plan in front of us and, you know, and descriptions of, you know, of the things we get to our discussions, you know, the part of our, you know, job is to make sure that, you know, what fits here also fits, you know, for the, you know, for the uses of the neighbors. And, you know, that would, you know, be looking at, you know, how we can make sure that everyone is as happy as we can, you know, reasonably make them. Not everyone will come out necessarily happy, but we, that's our job to try to figure it out.
Yeah. What this zoning lets us do is a little less, a little different than
Yeah, of course.
Traditional zoning.
Can I just say something about process, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
And I know Bill's going to want to address the primary colors question. So let me, let me do my thing first. We've submitted draft zoning to the state. The state is reviewing that and they will make a preliminary determination of eligibility. Once that comes back to us, and we need to wait for that to come back to us, because to advertise a public hearing in advance of that is guesswork. And if DH- And if DHCD says, we don't like this or we don't like that, we have to change it until they give us their preliminary determination of eligibility. So it's really important from a planning board perspective that if you have comments that you'd like to make to the zoning, not to wait till the state sends you back what they've basically certified as elect, as, as a, uh, something that can go to town meeting, but to give us feedback now so that we can, in the middle of this ninety-day review period, go to the state and say, well, we'd like to change something. Uh, we've been, met with the planning board and while you're reviewing it, here are the changes that they suggested. Because otherwise, we have to go back again to DHCD if you change something after the prelimination, preliminary determination of eligibility. And that's just the way the process works. I'm not faulting you for wanting to take a, a long look at it, but it, 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 it's gonna create another cycle of DHCD review.
You're, you're calling it, the way it works is, uh, does it work? I'm not too sure, this is so, um, someone eventually will ask whether this is spot zoning.
There's no such thing under chapter forty R of spot zoning.
We're always told to worry about it.
I wouldn't worry about it under chapter forty A at this point. It's been fifteen years since there's been a spot zoning case. So under forty R, every small parcel that can be developed for housing is an eligible parcel. I did the first one ever. It's at Saint George Catholic Church in Norwood. It was three quarters of an acre with a rectory, a Catholic church, and a, 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 another building on it. It ended up being fifteen units of housing, ten in the church, two in one building, three in the other. That's the definition of spot zoning in the old world, but chapter forty R is looking for those spots because we need the housing. So there is no such thing.
Okay. You have, uh, a comment also?
I'm gonna let Bill, Bill make a comment.
Good evening, um, Bill Lovett with Claremont. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time. And some, some great questions and points, and I'd like to just touch on a few of them, if I may. Starting with, uh, the traffic and the, uh, the walkway. So we did have a preliminary traffic study done. We used Ty and Bond, which is the same, uh, traffic consultant that did the study across the street in order to be able to make sure everyone had a holistic view, um, of what not only was we were proposing, but what had been proposed in the past. So again, that's getting a little too into the weeds, probably for tonight's discussion, but uh, it is something that we've already taken into consideration and had done. Uh, we are, uh, conceptually, and we've put them on our civil plans to create a path from our property down to the MBTA parking lot. Obviously, you know, with a little more traction on the project, we would engage with MBTA. Uh, but I do understand that they do allow for easements between, uh, for access. So another great point was made, a, a couple of great points were made with regard to, uh, you know, the amount of affordable housing and projects stalling. Uh, we are in a different world today than we were even eighteen months ago when we purchased the property at Five Millennium Drive. The, um, the, the construction type, so this, and it was alluded to, this is a very rocky site. The, the property falls off, um, from high to low quite dramatically. Uh, we will be blasting. Uh, we do have our intention, and again, without the benefit of a site plan, I'd be happy to, you know, to walk through a civil plan at any point in time. But we will be flattening the site in order to, and we'll have retaining walls on one side, retaining and then retaining walls on the lower side by the wet, wetlands as well. So there is quite a bit of site and extraordinary site costs on this property, in large part because of the blasting. Um, we completely understand the concerns with regard to blasting in the neighborhood. Uh, I've done projects where we blasted, uh, with, in, very close proximity to the Tennessee Valley Gas Line. And, you know, there's, we offered at these, uh, prior meeting to have main drilling and blasting come in and, and they can, you know, do a site tour and they can, you know, talk us through exactly what the protocols and process will be for blasting in very close proximity. So, uh, completely appreciate and acknowledge that. This, the project that's being built here is a five-story wood frame. Um, that is one of the most cost-effective, uh, types of construction insofar as, uh, when you introduce, uh, concrete podiums, so parking above or parking below, um, residential units or RAP, which is the pre, big precast concrete, uh, parking structures. Uh, or even when you do four-story, uh, wood frame buildings or three-story, that creates a lot more surface area across the property. Um, so five-story is probably the most economical. And we wanna build, let me be very clear, we want to build this project. Uh, we wanna execute on this project. We've worked, uh, very closely with Fiona and the team at the town. We've had this project, uh, some preliminary conversations with regard to doing a, a lip, a friendly forty B. Um, what, where we landed on the forty R is really because of the benefit of the state, to the town from the state, uh, as well as the, the benefits that the town, uh, and, um, I'm sorry, of the MBTA community uh, and the forty R component. So we've explored, like I said, we've owned the property for eighteen months and we've really been, uh, you know, working towards an executable project. And I think we really have one here. The, uh, with regard to density, parking does drive density. We do wanna make sure that we have enough parking for our residents. Uh, what we'll probably do in this instance is, um, have some what we call ghost parking spaces. Those ghost parking spaces are, we don't wanna overbuild parking, uh, but we wanna be prepared so that everyone has a spot, because not everyone will use the train. That said, um, you know, we'll put, have likely designate areas that we could put future parking in if the town or ourselves determine it, it be necessary. You know, we, just to reiterate, we do wanna build the project. The market has changed substantively. Uh, expectations, uh, from banks and financing, I think this was alluded to earlier, um, you know, has stalled a lot of projects. Uh, we know that we can execute our family office. We have very good relationships with banks. We would, but the, the economics have changed, the dynamics have changed. Uh, interest rates have doubled, uh, for construction loans and for permanent debt since we started. Cap rates, which are an indication of value based on income, the expectation of cap rates and development have, uh, have gone up substantially. Uh, and, you know, all those things are driving pressure and construction pricing has not come down. Construction pricing has maintained, you know, the level it, uh, has been. So we think under this program, being one of the first MBTA, if not the first MBTA communities, under the benefits of the forty R for the town, um, and under the program are, are really exciting. Uh, and we're, we're excited to, to be able to execute here. The, um, the one last thing I will say, and I apologize for, for taking so much time, but I, I think these are some important pieces, is we do have the, uh, the adjacent parcel under contract, uh, with the owner. I can qualify that further, but we do have an executed agreement of sale, uh, on that property. So with that, I will, uh, happy to answer any other questions.
Just, just to put a number on the, on Bill's parking, uh, statement, the bylaw itself does have a number in it. It's one point five spaces, two one point eight spaces. And unlike a forty B, which requires that ten percent of the units be available with three bedrooms, forty R has no such requirement. So it's pretty standard in the industry to have one point five for a two-bedroom unit. And there'll be one-bedroom units as well here, so.
I guess that we have to look at, probably you, you have, because we have parking numbers, uh, in, in our zoning for different districts. We have to have, make that stuff ma- match up. Let's see. The, uh, you talked about making a path down to the station. It'd be nice, it seems to me, if, uh, that's done in a way that it's not just from your property, but that anybody walking down, um, the row, uh, Millennium Drive would be able to go on down also.
They would, sorry. There would be, the, the, based on the topography, the property and, and making it accessible uh, from an ADA compliance standpoint, the, and Fiona, I don't know if it's too much trouble, but if you wanna, we would be running it along the property line that's, I guess, south-facing, so it would be adjacent to the MBTA, the rear of the MBTA parking lot. We would be running down in parallel to that, uh, with the grade. But certainly somebody could walk through from Millennium, uh, and down or up that path.
Yeah, maybe when you lay this out, you can show a, a way that that would be, you know, actually clear to, to everybody that go this way to the station. You know what I mean?
With signage, sure.
The other one is, uh, there was talks about the money not, might not be available, but they say that will be, if the money is, I'm, I'm interested in, um, guarantee, guarantees before zoning is passed, that it will work. Because I'd hate to do all this and then find out we don't get the money in the end.
I, I will reach out to Bill Rail, who is the program director, and I'll see if I can get you an email assurance to that effect.
Okay, anybody else?
I think, you know, sort of focusing on the forty R aspect of this, which is, you know, that comes well before any project plan review comes to us. Focusing on the forty R aspect of this, basically on what, what will happen, what has to happen to get this zoning in place. Uh, we have before us, um, some proposed, uh, language for the zoning bylaw, which, you know, as I noted, if I were doing this some, in somewhat more abstract, I would, I would probably use different parameters that would allow a greater variety of projects in here. But I am not uncomfortable with leaving the language as proposed, uh, for, among other reasons, you know, not trying to take the time to figure out what we might like to see in terms of other potential projects, but also because, as I pointed out before, because the, the parameters were specific, pretty specifically tuned to this project, a consequence of leaving, you know, using the language as proposed means we're not gonna see a larger project come in here. Basically, it's this or something smaller, uh, under the current proposed zoning. I'm comfortable with that. And if we ever need to revisit that, um, yeah, this zoning can always be amended. Has to go through, you know, DHCD rolls off the tongue so much better than EYHLC. I'll eventually get used to it, but anyway, yeah, a change to this would have to roll through the state. But for, but for now, I don't really see a compelling need to, to do something different than what's currently proposed. I will point out that in my review of the design standards, which is a separate thing from the forty R zoning, there are a, a, a few little details there that, uh, you know, if I were writing it, I'd write it slightly differently. Couple spelling errors and maybe a couple of things that I might, might suggest to be done differently, but that's not something we have to deal with tonight. Think overall, you know, the concept here and the direction that this is taking, um, I'm comfortable with it.
Actually, it sounded like dealing with it fairly soon would be really good, because someone's gonna write up the proposal and it's gonna go off to Boston and then that's what goes through us to town meeting. And if town meeting amends it, I don't know, we're in trouble, so.
Yeah, no, the
I think, I think, uh, now.
Yes, so as, as Attorney Bravowski pointed out, the, the proposed zoning that they've written up and the design standards are already in Boston. If there's anything we wanted to, right, if there's anything we wanted to see done differently, now would be the time. And, uh, I think I'm not, I, I don't know that we wanna spend time reviewing the design standards tonight. Uh, I do have a few comments in those, on those, which I don't know if the board wants to take some time to look at those. Either tonight or next, next meeting.
I hadn't planned on quite this much time already. Uh, there are people here for public hearings at seven thirty.
Well, if I had one request, can I add one additional point? Uh, so this is going back to what, um, uh, Dave had, uh, shared as inputs on the limitations. My, 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 my request or recommendation is that while there are limitations based on a ten-year-old, uh, law for the current situation, I'm trying to see, is there a potential to plan, design, or design a solution for future on a scalable mode? That today we, can we have the property located or the buildings located in such a way that you have space for future expansion? What if we change the rule five years down the line? We are, as it is, we are always playing catch-up in terms of affordable units. And if you change the law and if you build the, uh, two buildings in such a way that there is no more space for expansion, we kill the opportunity that would be even potentially available five years down the line. So just a recommendation or suggestion that if there is a way to create or come up with a solution and locate the buildings in a way, not that you can design the building to take ten more stories in future.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, Bill and I would be happy to work with a, I, I don't know if you've ever done this before, but if there were, was a subcommittee that wanted to go into the language on a much deeper level with us, we'd be happy to meet with them at their convenience so that they could get into the weeds on the zoning bylaw and the design standards and, uh, and make recommendations to the full board. Those meetings could be off-camera, they don't, if it's not a quorum of the board, it doesn't need to be posted under the open meeting law. We could schedule it during the daytime with Fiona's assistance and, um, either, either by Zoom or by direct contact in town hall, we could, uh, revise and refine the zoning if the board feels like that's necessary. Although I did appreciate the comments that said that it, that it was fine as is, so.
If I may, that, that would be time-sensitive, Mark, so we would need to set something up relatively quickly.
Right, exactly.
So in terms of advertising, giving people the opportunity to
Yeah, I, on that point, I think if, if it's, you know, desired, you know, with the time, you know, timeline, you know, availability, it probably does make sense to be not a quorum of the board, you know, and people that might wanna attend it and still possibly record it on Zoom or something that we can have, you know, the ability for anyone in the public or any other members of the board to watch the entire conversation, even though it wouldn't be a posted meeting.
Oddly enough, I've seen comments of talking about quorum and whatnot. If you have a subcommittee, I've seen some opinion that, if you have a quorum of the subcommittee, then it has to be a public meeting. But, um, I'll let someone figure that out.
That was, that was true under the old open meeting law.
Well, I, I know, I know, but people keep inventing things east of here about forty miles.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it used to go through the DA and, and even a two, two members on a seven-member board had to post. But now the AG controls it and she has ruled that it's a quorum, uh, that controls.
Quorum of the, the
Of the, of the committee, uh, the governmental entity would be the planning board.
Subcommittee.
Yeah, the subcommittee of two members is not, is not a postable event.
Of a five-member board.
Correct.
Okay, well, um, we'll figure it out in a minute, uh, David.
Yeah, you, you, you might guess that I might be willing to participate in that.
All right.
I, I can't imagine why you would think that.
No, and, and if there's, if there's a second member that wants to
Yeah, and if
Help.
If, if, if any other board members have had, you know, had any thoughts that they would want. Anything you wanted to say in this meeting about things that we ought to consider in the details of the, either the zoning or the design standards?
The, the subcommittee members can speak individually, I believe, to whomever they wish to.
That sounds like a plan.
Right, now, is, is there, I think David is volunteering, aren't you, David? And, uh, is there anybody else who wants to be in there? Subcommittee of one. So ordered.
I can do that, I think.
There, there is absolutely no question about quorum requirements through open meeting law. When it is a single member of the board.
It's, it's the entire, uh, subcommittee present.
A, a quorum of one is necessarily one. A, a quorum of one is necessarily one. All right, we'll work on that offline then.
Yes, okay.
We'll, we'll work through Fiona's office. Thank you.
Yes, is there anything more?
If I may, I quickly took, uh, before we wrap up, I will just summarize comments in the meeting minutes and send them off to, to Bill as well because there was a lot of valid concerns.
You, you'll have about a half a day to.
Yes.
We've been talking about how, how fast she must be able to type. Um, okay. All set?
Let's ask ChatGPT to summarize it.
You have, you have to get the subscription to the updated one. All this is since.
Anyway.
Not, not to take too much of a sidetrack, but not too long ago, I saw on the news about how, how a lawyer used ChatGPT to write a brief and ChatGPT quoted about six non-existent cases.
Yeah, I, I got thoughts, but that's not.
Okay. Could, could we let the folks who are here, all of the rest of this, uh, have a share now? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, let's see, I think I want to do, um, public hearings at this point.
Yeah, would be good.
We have a special permit twenty twenty-three dash oh two.
Scenic Road permit.
For Scenic Road and another one twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
They're, they're unique filings. We should read them, do them separate, I think.
Do the, do the hearings separately?
Yes.
Do you like that idea?
I think that fits their unique filings and. Mr. Hill, I just, me just read the public hearing notice.
All right.
Pursuant to Articles twenty-four of the General Bylaws of the Town of Grafton and Scenic Road Regulations, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty PM in Conference A at the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. To consider an application for scenic road permit for alterations to the stone wall for a driveway opening located at sixty-two Western Street, Lot One, as shown as Grafton Assessors Map twenty-two, Lot Twelve. Said property is located in a low-density residential R forty zoning district. The applicant owner is Willard House Clock Museum. A copy of the application plan is available, is available for public inspection at the Planning Department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at www.grafton-ma.gov on the Planning Department Development Products webpage.
Good evening. My name's Norman Hill. I'm a licensed civil engineer and a licensed land surveyor. I'm also the president of Land Planning Consulting Firm headquartered here in Grafton. And tonight I'm representing the Willard House and Clock Museum. If you recall, we had, uh, an A and R plan for three lots and we're talking about Lot One right now. And the location of these lots, if you were at the Willard House, you came out of the Willard House and turned right, went up the hill to that stop sign, about a quarter mile up the hill, turn right, you get down the road about a quarter mile on your left, that's where these lots are located, before you get to Magnolia. It's a scenic road. This particular Lot, Lot One, the stone wall's a good three feet tall, probably built two hundred years ago. So what, 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 what we would, what we're proposing is that what the walls, the, the stones that are taken out would be reused, twenty feet or so, either side of the driveway curving in. So you would, you wouldn't be losing any stone wall. And uh, that, that's, uh, that's what we're hoping you'll, you'll allow us to do.
And this does not involve the cutting of any major trees on the road, just the stone wall?
Not on the road, but the, the lots are wooded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right. I did. The concern under the scenic road law is, is whether there are any of the trees, you know, any, 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 you know, big old shade trees that are basically in the right of way on the town side of the stone wall or close to it that would need to be cut and.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there were no large trees with this driveway supposed.
So it's simply, you know, this, the, the existing stone wall runs the entire length of the frontage?
It does.
And so kind of, if you want to get a driveway, you kind of have to cut through the stone wall.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments or input from anyone?
I think this is.
This is a very straightforward.
About as straightforward as it can be, given that there is no question of the need to, uh, you know, remove a section of stone wall.
Are you moving to close the hearing?
I think, i- if, if we're not hearing any comments from the public or any other comments from the board, not seeing any hands on Zoom, so I will move that the board close the public hearing and direct staff to draft a decision taking into account all the information received on this hearing.
Second.
Motion second is, is their discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veekatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hasner.
And I vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You know our drill.
And now I have.
Next, twenty-three dash oh one.
Pursuant to Articles twenty-four of the Grafton, of the General Bylaws of the Town of Grafton and Scenic Road Regulations, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty PM in Conference A at the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. To consider an application for scenic road permits for alterations to the stone wall for a common driveway located at sixty-two Western Street, Lots Two and Three, as shown as Grafton Assessors Map twenty-two, Lot Twelve. Said property is located in a low-density residential R forty zoning district. The applicant owner is Willard House Clock Museum. A copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the Planning Department during regular business hours of the Town of Grafton website at www.grafton-ma.gov on the Planning Department Development Products webpage.
So this driveway involves a driveway. It's a common driveway. It would serve both lots two and three. This is the common driveway here. Magnolia's down here. This is Western. Willard Clock Museum's over here. So just a single driveway here. This one's wider. It's eighteen feet wide, the driveway itself. Now, the stone wall in this location, it's just the base stones. It's just the remains of a former stone wall. See how boulders maybe the size of this table, every four or five feet, but those boulders would be removed and again, used on the rounding on either side of this proposed driveway. And there is one large tree that's gotta cut down in this location.
Okay. Questions?
I think the good view is what Mr. Hill put in his application package, the actual street view of this one.
Yes, this is a photograph in with the application.
One of the things we typically look for is if, if a tree is proposed to come down, the question would be, is there an alternative that would avoid the loss of the tree?
Well, it's, it's eighteen feet wide and it's not quite in the middle, but almost in the middle of the proposed driveway. And the tree is, it's a big tree. Yeah.
How healthy is the tree?
It's got some dead limbs, but I, I think it's gonna live another twenty years. It would probably live another twenty or thirty years. Yeah.
Depending on what you do.
I know, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Comments from anyone? Questions?
So I will say, this is probably the first scenic road permit that I remember seeing that has had a street view, especially with a vehicle in the spot where the driveway's gonna be. So whoever's idea that was possibly yours, I'm, you know, I'm happy to see it that way. And then, yeah, I think the frontage is pretty, you know, is relatively wide, but with the placement of the wetlands and the, and the buffer, I think, you know, from my personal view of the plans, I don't think there's a, a much better spot for the driveway to fit, even though we are losing a tree.
It's going in pretty flat, right? And what we've got to propose.
Anybody? Anyone?
I have a quick question. Norman, did you coordinate with Kevin about the tree or was this?
Haven't talked to the, uh, the tree warden yet.
Okay. Okay. So we can do, we can touch base.
We will.
Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah, we don't have a comment from there, do we?
Hmm, well, yeah, but this, it would be worthwhile. I, I would be interested in, in getting the tree warden's opinion of this tree.
Okay. I request a continuance then. Two weeks?
Yeah.
Two weeks?
I might suggest that we have staff do a draft as well in case we think we're ready to close of the next, you know, completely close of the next hearing and maybe have a decision.
Yeah.
Two weeks earlier so, or so.
That'd be appreciated.
What type of things would the tree warden say that would prevent it from moving forward?
There's, there's something about, he's supposed to have a hearing too, isn't there? Or at least he used to be.
There are, there are circumstances under which the tree warden, um, holds hearings on tree. And I, I, I should remember more than I do because I've been, uh, wearing one of my other hats. I've been revising the shade tree bylaw.
In your spare.
But off, off the top of my head, I don't remember under what circumstances the tree warden needs to hold a hearing. Uh, I would be, you know, the tree warden would be able to give us a sense of how valuable this tree is. And, and even given all that, if, if, if there's no feasible way to shift the location of the driveway far enough in one direction or the other to preserve the tree, then, you know, regardless of just where the tree sits within the driveway, if, if you can't work around it, there's not much to be done.
But, yeah, I don't.
Just.
But it's a town tree.
Yeah, if it's on.
It's on our side of the.
It's generally assumed to be if it's on the, if it's on the roadside of the stone wall, the stone wall is usually understood to be the edge of right of way.
It is on the roadside. It's on the roadside of the stone wall.
Um, cause remember with the subdivision on Adams Road, the subject came up and the tree warden, I think it was a tree warden, uh, got into replacement of tree and all that kind of thing. So you, you're making your request. If there's nothing now, might wanna have a motion to grant.
I think I will move that the board grant the applicants to be received written request to continue this hearing to August twenty-eighth.
Second.
Do, do you want to be asking, not even have to be anyway, but asking for a draft decision if possible?
And while, while we're at it, we can.
Right.
Authorize staff to begin drafting a decision.
Second, yes.
Okay. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Veekatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hasner.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Um. One eighty-eight Providence Road, Broad Meadow North. Um, special permit and site plan.
Yeah, and I have a notice. All right. Pursuant to Sections one dot three dot three and one dot five dot seven of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaws, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three commencing at seven thirty PM to consider a special permit application and site plan approval for five twenty-four unit apartment buildings and one sales center on property located at one eighty-eight Providence Road, Grafton Assessors Map ninety-nine, Lot One. Said property is located in a multifamily residential RMF and community business CB zoning district. The applicant owner is Broad Meadow Realty LLC. A copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the Planning Department Development Projects webpage. My screen just changed. Planning Department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at www.grafton-ma.gov on the Planning Department Development Products webpage.
Good evening. I'm Norman Hill. Let me make some introductions. This is Rob Kanappick. He'll be the attorney on the project.
Thank you.
This is Jay McGill. He's the, the owner. Jeremy, Jeremy Miller. He's the office manager.
So where this project is located.
I don't think you find a better place in town for a multifamily apartment complex. If you sat at the center of town, went down the hill, turn left on one twenty-two Providence Road, go out about almost a mile on your right-hand side. Just before you get to the site, on your right-hand side is Riverview Apartments. Just after you pass this site is another big apartment complex owned by McGill. He owns many apartment complexes in town. He, you know, he keeps his property nice. He does a good job.
If I may momentarily, I, I've been wondering when this site would get developed.
Yeah.
Some of us remember when it was, there was gonna be a shopping center there, but.
Yes, I, I remember signing the plan for that, um, at a town meeting, uh, prior to a town meeting somewhere when I was about half this age.
If I put a supermarket there.
Supermarket, that, that's where that zoning, you know, he asked for his zoning.
Ninety-three.
Yep.
Nineteen ninety-three. And the site used to have a little bit of this in it, but now the site's pretty much dead flat, except it's about fifteen feet below the road, which for houses across the street, that's kind of nice because it's almost hidden from view.
Yeah, no, the town really wanted that supermarket. He never built it.
No.
Anyway.
Now, anyway, here we are.
Anyway, here we are. So we have not maxed out the site. We, we could do two hundred and six units. We're proposing a hundred and twenty apartments. Five buildings. Each building will have twenty-four units. Four of them will be one bedroom and twenty of them will be two-bedroom. Now, this is twenty-five percent of these units can be on your inventory for affordable. Twenty-five percent, so thirty units. That, that, that's a big plus. And, and he's, we're definitely gonna do this. Not going through the state, but we're gonna work with your local authority and these will be qualified units.
So we get a hundred percent?
We get a hundred percent. They're all rental. Twenty-five percent of them are affordable.
Yeah.
Hundred percent go on the S H I.
With, with so many rules.
So many rules, I know. You'd like to start the project next spring. So.
Just as a side note, under forty B, these would be called, classified as local action units.
So we're seeking site plan approval and a special permit for the multifamily. Now, zoning would require two hundred and sixty-six spaces and we're proposing two seventy. So we're not asking for any, any, any waivers. Um, there's, we're gonna be town sewer and town water. There's a sewer, existing sewer truck that runs behind the property. So, and there's a, a line that goes down from Luca that goes down and from Riverview that goes down. They're gonna connect to that and then, so not gonna touch the old line near Fisherville Pond. They're gonna hit the line that goes down to that old line. It's an eight-inch and that's plenty big enough. The sewer department says there's capacity at the plant and there's capacity at the pipes from the site to the plant. Grafton Water says they've got capacity and they're looking forward to having this. And, and we've looped the water. So water's gonna go down the entrance driveway, go into the site and then come up the hill and tie back in Providence Road. So we'll have a loop.
They like, they like loops.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, I know. Usually don't have anything that's this good. So, um, the slope of the driveway going down is gonna be from three percent and down to four percent. When you get down into the site, all the slopes are plus or minus one or two percent. So driveway's just gonna go up and down, up and down, so we can control the drainage. The traffic, the traffic report's been prepared by Chapel Engineering. They didn't see any problems. There's excellent site distance, both intersection site distance and stopping site distance. Um, and they didn't say any changes in the classes of service at Milbury Street or down at Main Street or at, or at Cross Street. Uh, we've got a, a lighting plan in, in the package of plans done by Shepherd Engineering. I just wanted to point out that all these pole, these lights are gonna have what they call shoe boxes on them. So the lights shine down. Nothing will shine up or, or cross Providence Road. All lights will go down. There's a landscaping plan, three, three plans in the package done by Earth Design for the landscaper. So she has all the trees as required per your regulations and, and, and it's gonna be beautifully landscaped. And, uh, you might want to look, look at the three landscape plans that, that she's done. So that, that's just a quick overview. Uh, I know it's been sent out to Graves. The deposit's been delivered for Graves and, uh, so they'll probably need two or three weeks to review these plans. It's, it's, it's like forty sheets of plans.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a traffic, there's a stormwater management report that's going in, the traffic study, uh, and, and the plans. So I, I, I suggest we, we, just to see if there's any public here tonight complaining and, and then, uh, we'll come back maybe in three or four weeks, give Graves time to, to give this review. Okay?
Yeah. I think.
Questions, comments?
My kind of only question is that sales office slash mailroom, is that gonna be strictly speaking for like sales of the, of the apartments and units on site? Or is this gonna be more like, you know, commercial, other people coming in to, to use that in some way?
So they've had problems with mail, some of their units.
Yes.
Someone's mail disappear. They order a new, new pair of shoes and, and they come home from work and they're gone. So they're gonna have mail delivery all there for all the units. And there'll be people there to rent the units. So it's like with salespeople to rent the units. And there'll be maintenance people there too. So have like a plow truck out back and a lawnmower equipment. So have three, three purposes.
How, how does the mail delivery work? Is it a, is it one of those, those boxes?
Mailman will put in, there's gonna be a box for each, each unit and he'll. Mailman will put in, there's gonna be a box for each each unit and he'll just.
Oh, for each unit, but they have ea- each each unit has a.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a little box. It's gonna be like a take packages, almost like a two by two box with a lock on it.
And 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 all all of the last mile people will have ways to get into it uh.
All all the who people?
The last mile. You know, U P S and.
Amazon.
Oh, oh, yes.
Amazon.
Yes.
Okay.
And yeah, I think this at the high level, this looks like a, you know, great spot for what's being proposed and I, you know. My biggest concerns will come from if our traffic peer review has anything to negative to say. I think the area is also, you know, pretty conducive for. You know, this traffic use most likely, but I'll still pen withhold my thoughts till our peer review comes in and similarly for Graves, but I think. You know, at the high level, I'm, you know, looking this.
Basically on the traffic, it adds about a a car a minute in the morning peak and in the evening peak, about a car a minute.
Okay, well, we'll we'll have to see Graves and and so on, but. Is there, well, is there anyone here or out there who wants to comment, speak, whatever, on this at this point?
I'm gonna make a comment about entrance and exit.
What's that?
Thank you. I don't even live in the Town of Grafton, but my ex does and I'm there frequently.
Sure, John Witral and I'm from South Perry, Mass. My ex lives on Luca Drive. Uh visiting her quite frequently, Luca Drive can be a bitch to get in and out of, pardon my French, but. The traffic coming from both directions right there is tough if it's the wrong time of day. So I can just see the, you know, couple hundred in the morning, couple hundred at night at typical morning and evening commute times. Being tough because even though they say there's enough sight view, it can be tough getting in and out because there's a lot of traffic on that road. That's my comment. Well, there should be a blinking yellow light there or some, you know, signs, whatever. But that's gonna be a lot of extra traffic in that spot because it is on a corner.
Yeah. Let's look at the traffic.
Keep that in mind when we review the traffic reports.
Yep.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm in and out of there fairly frequently and it can be problematic getting in and out at those times.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nothing on me, please.
Will this site have uh water access to Fisherville Pond like Riverview does?
We we haven't uh proposed any trails down to Fisher. It's about four hundred feet up from Fisherville in distance. It's probably thirty or forty feet in elevation, so it's rather not disturb the trees going down. So we haven't proposed anything going down to Fisherville.
Not like boat ramps or anything?
I mean, you've got that at Riverview, you know, that's a nice facility, yeah, which you kayak it, man, yeah.
The um, yeah, there there's the driveway to your whatever, north left. Um which goes down and goes down to the town.
It does.
Park, whatever, uh down there at the bottom. So that's get toable by people in this, in this complex, very nice. Okay, uh anybody else with any input at this point?
I'm I'm waiting to hear the uh period of the reports.
Yeah, and I'm waiting now to for maybe a request to continue if if there's nothing.
Yes, I would make a request. We continue this for probably four weeks, give Graves four weeks.
Till the till the first September meeting. Whatever the date is.
Is that what you're gonna do?
Yeah.
All right.
Before we adjourn, she has a question about the entrance.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it on the map. If there's only one entrance off Providence Road.
Sorry, can you just come up to the podium, please?
Yeah, you have to.
There's just one entrance in and out of the unit.
Yes.
Okay, is there any possibility of making a second one because that would help alleviate the traffic entrance out of that one?
I I would say no to that because uh as you go further south, Providence Road is higher, it's going uphill.
Okay.
And the site is staying level or going downhill a little. So where we have it. Is the best spot in terms of change in elevation and the approach down down the other end. It's too too great a diff- change in elevation. Yeah.
This is, this is an existing curb cut from the supermarket days, right?
Exactly, that's exactly where we've positioned this driveway. The the road's actually widened there in anticipation of that supermarket, yeah.
Interesting. Never knew of the supermarket.
Thank you.
Oh.
There's only probably not too many of us in this room that remember that.
So our next meeting in September is September eleventh.
Okay.
That's your request?
Yes.
Move the board grant the applicants to be received written request to continue this hearing to Monday, September eleventh. That's on thirty P M.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, uh.
Moved in seconded.
Yes.
End of discussion.
Mister Robbins.
Aye.
Mister Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mister Vecchitt Tramon.
Aye.
And Mister Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll see you in four weeks. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm staying. I have another one, final one.
Busy night for you.
You don't stay.
A big night for land planning, yeah.
Land planning is dominating the hearings tonight.
Yeah.
If I didn't knock them out all in one and different ones.
And the only one that's not land planning is is gonna be continued.
I don't know what was that.
Okay. Good. Could we be, could we be uh quiet or or talk in the hall? Could we?
Excuse me.
Could could we talk in the hall, please? Um, thank you. Okay, uh M R S P twenty twenty-three dash oh eight slash P B.
All right. I do have a public notice. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Commencing at seven thirty P M to consider the application for a major residential special permit and preliminary plan approval. For a nine lot residential flexible development on property located at sixty-one Maple Avenue. As shown on Grafton Assessors Map twenty, one twenty-nine lot seventeen. Said property is located in a medium density residential R twenty and industrial I zoning district. The applicant is Stephen David sixty-one Maple Street Trust and the owner is, I've probably said this wrong before, but Chung Hee Chung Pak To Hyung. That may be right.
Good evening again. So my client, he faded, he left. He's gonna watch the meeting on Zoom.
Okay, just um do we have?
I was just going to say Norman gave me the check today, this way before the hearing, so we can, we can do.
Okay.
So he made up for that that uh application fee, which I misunderstood when I read the uh. The form. I know. It said so much per your, for a lot plus maximum not to exceed, so I just caught the maximum. But anyway, that that sorted out. So this started at around forty lots. As you recall, the the back third of the properties all zone industrial. And my client didn't want to do a forty B, so uh we've done the best we can. So now we're proposing roads just five hundred feet long. Last time we tried was nine hundred feet long, wanted to get thirteen lots, just five hundred feet long, not over five hundred feet. And we're able to get nine lots for him. Fiona, can you put it up on the screen?
Yes.
Uh, I didn't bring the plans. I I only found out late today after I left my office that he was even coming and with the check and. So anyway, I'm not, I'm not really totally prepared, but we're seeking a special permit for major residential development. And we're seeking approval of preliminary plans. So everything's been submitted to Graves. Again, he's gonna need three or four weeks to go through everything and report back to you. So I will be asking for a continuance shortly, once we hear from the public. Um, so the the conventional plan, could you press put up the conventional plan? It it's just. A road into a cul-de-sac with another road off this cul-de-sac. If you start at the street and go to either road, neither one exceeds five hundred feet. And we're able to get nine lots out of that plan. And then then the the flex, which we would prefer the flex, is just the one road goes down that existing, that existing trail. It's an existing, like almost a road, but it's it's gravel, went down to the old farm out back. So but but the flex would almost follow that road, be just to the right of that road and go down. So um.
I I.
Not asking for any waivers, everything's right per, all codes, all the regulations, the road pavement, the curving, everything's right per the regs. Um that that's the uh conventional plan there. And you see we're able to get nine lots. Every lot has enough frontage and acreage and uh. And but these, now, this, we're gonna bring town water into this site. This existing water main passes the site on Maple. And we're just gonna do septic though. So I've done preliminary testing on three of these lots. That I've submitted with this package and it's good sandy soil. It's it's just was so wet this winter, it was too wet to perk it. But we'll be perking it probably this September, October, if it ever stops raining. I know, I know. Uh, if you could, could you put up the uh flexible plan now?
Yes.
And then the flexible plan has uh just one straight road going. There it is, right there. There's the flexible. Basically have uh three groups of three, but um so three on the right, three straight ahead and three down the hill on the left. So again, just nine lots. We're not looking for any bonus lots or uh, uh it's really all all we could get on the site with that five hundred foot road. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have and open it up to the public.
I'll say at least the plans that I looked at, it it doesn't have the as clear distinction between flex and, you know, non-flex. From what I've seen on, I was uploaded, like sheet seven shows the two cul-de-sacs and sheet six shows the one, so it was a little bit confusing to follow.
I was, I was getting ready to complain. Um your North Arrows have to point up and. It customarily, we have, well, I would, well, that that's a draw, that's a picture with flex. But u- usually the plan, the plans um show, like the one that's on the screen now. Usually are clearer in the title block, you know, here's a flexible plan, here's a conventional plan. Uh and it's a little, little easier.
Yeah, we tried to fit it all on one sheet.
Yeah, okay, well, anyway, you realize that we're look, I'm looking at this on little screens. None of the, uh, we used to actually have paper, you know, with plans.
Yeah, we submitted, we submitted paper plans at a forty scale, but uh when you put it on the computer, I know, you have to enlarge it, yeah.
Yeah, well, except if your screen is a a eighth of.
I know.
Sea-sized drawing.
I know.
Um, and it's a dozen-year-old computer.
I know.
Okay. Who, uh, so you're gonna be asking to continue.
Yes, to be, uh, four weeks also, yeah.
And we'll be looking for.
Yeah.
I don't know if the public had any, sorry.
Yeah, I'll be, I'm I'm gonna have a, just a second. Um, okay, well.
My, I do have just more minor thoughts that, number one, I think this is a much better plan, given the constraints of the lot. Than what we had previously, you know, had discussed, you know, in front of us and I think, you know, in the back of my mind. That really long driveway is, you know, an interesting workaround to the nine, to the five hundred feet, you know, dead end length. That I'm not certain how I, you know, feel with the lo- that long of a driveway, but I I know there are others in Grafton that are even longer. You know, so it's for driveways themselves.
And I'd rather have my own than share it with somebody, you know. I like to take care of my own things, yeah.
Yeah, but I think we'll have more opportunity to.
Yeah, there there'll be.
Tuck that one.
I guess there'll be some sort of, it's been a while since I've seen one, but some sort of dealing with. The property owners have to agree about how a driveway works.
In this, they're not shared, I don't think.
No, they're not shared. Those are all individual, all on their own lot.
Okay.
That's kind of why you said you'd prefer to have your own driveway rather than, rather than.
That's just me, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Anything else from anybody?
Well, if I remember correctly, there was some discussion in earlier iterations of this plan about. Whether a sewer should be brought into this.
Yes.
My recollection is that the sewer department said they'd rather not.
They'd rather not, yes. I should have mentioned that, yeah.
Hmm, well, would it be uh, would it be a pumping situation or?
We would have to pump it if we if we pumped it. Yeah, we'd have to get up to the, up to Maple Avenue and then down, and we'll go, but we'd have to pump it out of the site, yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, Jane Provost, um two zero six two Hill Street, I would be in a butter. Um, three of the house lots that are planned are, would be abutting the property that I own at two zero six two Hill Street in Northbridge. Because this property falls on the line. I would be concerned about um disrupting the land. About the septics that would need to be put in. There is a lot of wetland on that property. Um, I would be concerned about how that would affect the property that I own. I'd also be concerned about traffic. Um, because people would be heading to one forty-six, which would be an added traffic coming up the road, um passing in front of, in front of. My house. Um, those would be my two major concerns.
I think you're, aren't you uphill from us, going towards Northbridge here uphill?
Yes.
Everyone's uphill.
Yeah, so the septics um go into the ground, so the septics wouldn't go your way, they'd go downhill. And once they get into the ground, they would migrate downhill.
The house lots are are quite close to the property line for my building. And the houses seem close to the roadway that you're putting in, which would lead me to believe that where you're planning to put the septic would be in the back of the house.
That's correct.
Closer to my, closer to my lot.
That's correct, but I still think you'd be uphill from those three houses.
It's a concern.
Yeah, the septics would all be per per state code, you know, there wouldn't be any cutting any corners there.
And I mean disrupting the land to build in and of itself.
I know.
Always changes, it it changes.
And I I will say that, you know, the the wetland concerns are definitely a thing to think about, but that's primary. You know, this board primarily relies on the conservation, you know, department and conservation, you know, board, I forget the exact term right now. The Conservation Commission, thank you. And then, you know, to kind of, you know, evaluate that and. Cause that they're more familiar with the regulations and state code regarding that. And, you know, this would, you know, I expect to be going before concert, you know, the cons.
Yes, I think seven of these nine lots will require.
Yep.
Conservation Commission. Now, we're not proposing to alter any wetlands, you know, we position these houses and roads to avoid the wetlands.
Right.
But we would have to get permits from them for seven of these nine lots.
And my my main point was that they're also gonna have their own public hearing process for, you know, for this project that would, you know, go before them, you know, for that. And we usually get a, we usually like to see them them give a positive endorsement of the project before we make a final decision. You know, that's usually our process.
Although we can't, you know, require it.
Correct.
At least that's what I was taught. Um, we. Because they could require us and we could require them and you'd never get it done.
We, we, back in the day, when I was on conservation and Bob was on planning here. There were times when projects bounced back and forth between the two boards. Those days are long gone, but.
Yeah, but. I think a lot of developers find that it's cheaper to get both boards happy before. So as to not have to get a plan approved here, for example, and then con comes as something. And they have to come back and, you know, file for a change uh and change their plan.
We do like to keep those processes coordinated.
So this is gonna be about a nine-month arduous process. I mean, we'll be perking these lots maybe around. September, late September.
Okay.
And then we, we have to get this preliminary approval and this special permit. And then we have to de- design everything, so we might not be submitting the final plans until like next February or March. Yeah.
But maybe in time to get going in the spring, to get digging in the spring.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody else?
I live forty-nine Maple, so three of the houses with a button as well.
Name?
Oh, Tracy Paget. Um, I just had a couple of questions. I don't know if they're pertinent or not, but.
Could could you be a little more at the microphone?
It seems like the last proposal was for a whole lot of uh units. And you needed a second road and that's why it didn't go through. So it seems to me that there's a lot of land there that's not being used, right?
That's correct.
So I'm just kind of surprised that you would go for such a smaller amount of houses. And I wonder if there's any kind of uh way that they could get this approved. And then farther down the line, try to add on and sort of circumvent that original needing the second easement or second egress.
I I I don't, well, the thing is that 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 difficulty has been there. Uh, the the industrial section down by the railroad has been there since before our time. Um, at least since eighty-sixish. At least since eighty-sixish, when the current map was adopted. And uh, no one's figured out. They, they insisted on, the, the industrial used to head on down towards the corner with uh Depot and, and whatnot. I think it may have gone all the way down there, um. If, i- if it had been, if there'd been rezoning.
I'm not thinking industrial, I'm just wondering.
But people kept chipping away at it, um, so that now there's really no way or there hasn't been a way. That anyone could find to develop it, so it's a piece of open land.
And as far as the, you know, the housing and the, you know, unused land is, you know, itself is, you know, to, you know, even if they come back in, you know. A year after this is built and say, oh, now we have a road, we want to do more and we can extend it, you know, it's still the. Length of that road is five hundred feet, you know, so extending it would make it a thousand feet and that would be a, you know, blocker for their current. For any future thing, so they.
He's up to the maximum allowed length.
So that's what I'm looking for, so if, if this is, if this project goes through, that's the way it's gonna be, it can never be expanded.
I think so too, and if you look at the map, there's zero at blue, that's all wetlands, it's all been flagged and surveyed, that's an accurate representation of all the wetlands on that property. You can't extend that road without crossing those wetlands and they don't allow that anymore.
Okay.
And, yeah, so like if they were to develop this, there'd have to be other avenues to try to, you know, do that, like. Purchasing neighboring lots that they don't currently own and finding a way to, you know, traverse them or make, you know. Probably expensive, you know, but suitable wetland crossings, which is basically building something up that goes over the wetlands, that's usually very expensive and prohibitive. You know, but, you know, that type of thing, you know, there's.
There's still. It's still tough to find a place that, you know, lots that have houses on them aren't too handy to buy and.
Right.
Maybe tear, tear the house down so you can run the road through it. It, it's a, you know, if, if you, um, someone can show you out again in the map geo, uh, the uh. The towns GIS system and you can look at all the lots and, and you can try to find a place that would even be a way to do it. Maybe if you could get uh permission to cross the railroad, but I understand railroads don't give permission.
And then it's own industrial, you can't ever do houses there. Houses aren't allowed in industrial zone.
Yeah, my, my concern was just that. It went from a small project to a bigger project later down the road, kind of circumventing the original.
My, my client just went through a serious renegotiation to renegotiate the price, because his, his, purchase price is based on that plan right now. It's very different than what he wanted to do before.
Yes, well, that, that was my point, it seemed to be quite a difference.
And I, I would, I would say I'm not, you know, able to say that this wouldn't ever potentially be something bigger, you know, in the future. Like if zoning changes or some state law changes or something, but, you know, from what we know today, that I don't see there being a reasonable possibility to do that, but. That, something could change, but that's what we see today.
Zoning, zoning isn't permanent, we, we heard cases tonight, um, uh, Centec Park. Was established, a zoning was landed on it for, you know, light industry, uh, light industry basically. And it's been that way for whatever it was, twenty or thirty years. And now, okay, that's not working out and there is something that people do want, you know, that will work out, so they're asking to change the zoning. Uh, I don't see, I just don't see anything, uh, but, you know, don't say we promised you because. Maybe after I die, uh, you know, there'll be.
No, just good to know, nice way.
Thank you, never, never say never with, with a, with sufficient motivation. I.e. sufficient dollars.
Yes.
Almost anything could conceivably be done, but it's a practical matter, no, there's just no.
It's a real difficult, difficult situation.
I had a question about the common land, Norm, so can you just describe to the board which, so these, this top. Portion, the industrial zoned piece is going to be held in common ownership of lot three?
Open space will include all that wetland and it, and it only goes into the industrial zone just a few feet, so we wanted to keep. That outside this project, so all that remaining land would be deeded to the guy that buys lot three.
Okay.
The guy that buys lot three will end up owning all that industrial land.
Okay, so that was.
He wants to be a farmer, raise pigs, whatever he wants to do.
Okay, because that was one thing that I wanted to make clear, is I know there's provisions in our zoning bylaw for how common land is owned and what have you in.
But lot three, lot, lot three would be deeded all that industrial land.
Yeah, okay, and yeah, because the town wouldn't be able to maintain.
But that's not the open space, the open space is uphill from there.
Right, right, yeah, I just wanted to be clear from the jump that the town is. In terms of capacity and maintaining, something like this would be beyond. I also wanted to speak to, so I know, so it's, it's um. This area that we just talked about, but you're also using a portion of lot one and a portion of lot nine to contribute to the common land as well? I think I saw that in the.
I don't think so, no, I don't think so.
I have it.
No, definitely not. No, they would, they would own their own lots, they would not be part of the common land.
May- maybe we could.
Okay.
Drill down into that offline.
Okay, and I just, one other point that this lot seven R, did you, have you ta, have you had a conversation with a planner in Northbridge about what? That, that slipper, I mean, it's, it's saying, it, it's, you mentioned in the, on the title page that.
That piece will be deeded to one of those three houses on the right, but we want it, we don't want to have to go in front of the Northbridge Planning Board, so we didn't include that slipper of land in Northbridge.
Yeah, you say it's subject to a conservation easement here. Yeah, I, I guess I just wanted to confirm what, what conversations that you've had and, and what was the plan there.
Hmm, it's not part of the open space, I don't know why that note's on the plan like that.
It's also not much that we can.
I, I think, I think it's gonna be deeded to one of the three houses on the right.
Let's figure out this offline.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm fading too.
Okay.
Hi, Claudia Blanding, and my mother and I have sixty-seven Maple Ave, which is the house in the front.
Did you say your name?
Claudia Blanding, sixty-seven Maple Ave, the house, white house in the front. We have septic there and I'm wondering if disturbing all the land is gonna affect us, because obviously it's not gonna get any drier over there.
Are you just uphill on the right side of where the roads got proposed to go in, are you just to the right of that?
Yes, also where the street comes out and we have the shared driveway right next to that. And how is that gonna affect safety for the people using the driveway?
So.
I would be concerned about that.
Yeah, right now there's an existing gravel road.
Right.
And we'll be at that same elevation going in, so not, not gonna be taking it down or raising it, it's gonna be.
I'm not concerned about that, I'm concerned about the distance between the two and the safety of the people coming out of the driveway with that street directly next to it.
I know my client intends to talk to you about.
Well, intentions are good, but.
Yep, he, he, he might want to build you a new driveway off this road, yeah.
I don't know, but nobody informed me about that.
I know, he's gonna be contacting you about that, because right now you have a weird driveway that, that goes through the.
It's been there for many, many years.
Yeah.
Many years.
Yeah, well.
So, you know, if somebody buys something in the last few years, it doesn't necessarily supersede what the previous people are doing. You know, that's something that has to be determined, it shouldn't just be assumed.
He'll be knocking on your door soon.
Well.
Yeah.
I don't know. We shall see, I just am concerned about the safety of the people using the existing driveway.
Yeah.
Totally noted and.
Yeah, the two, the two neighbors share a driveway, it's right, right there, so it'd be good if one came out onto the road and the other one went out onto Maple.
We have any distance? From the intersection or from the lot line? I don't know.
We have. We have something on, on. Driveways, distance of a driveway from an intersection, I don't remember off the top of my head just what that is.
Yeah, that plan shows where that driveway is located, it's probably thirty feet, maybe thirty-five feet from the proposed road.
Why not, why don't we not try to do it off of computer screens? At this point. Anything else?
Does, is the proposed road, is that a private road or does that get?
Presumably would be uh put forward for acceptance when the whole project, normally.
Yeah, yeah, we would ask the town to accept this road once it's all built and inspected.
One of the reasons we have rules about how roads need to be built.
Yeah, that, that process typically, you know, it's private until it's not, is basically the, the, the rule is, you know, they, they want the town to accept it so they don't have to maintain it and pay. Their maintenance fees themselves, but, you know, that's why we have the standards, you know, as well, we want to have it followed, you know, but until. It meets the design criteria that, you know, the town needs, we approve it to be, you know, it gets approved, brought to town meeting. Then the town votes to accept it, if the town doesn't like the road for some reason, they can still say no, as a, as a town body.
Yeah, town meeting. That's a ways off.
I have another question, the trees, I remember, uh, Norm, can you just confirm that they'd be in the right of way?
They're all gonna be in the right of way, we, we couldn't give the exact spacing because of the driveways.
Right, I know you asked, requested for two waivers from subdivision regs for landscaping specifically, but I just wanted to, this goes back to my prior comment about. Maintenance and what the town.
Yeah, they would all be located in the right of way, a couple of those are not shown correctly, but they'd all be in the right of way, but they just couldn't meet the spacing, I think you said every fifty feet you had.
Yeah, I believe.
We went fifty, 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 we hit a driveway, so we had to shift to ten feet one way or the other.
I just wanted to, to point that out, that we've been having ongoing issues with maintaining.
We'll hear about it if we need to. Has everybody had? All right, yeah, so you wanna request a?
Four week, uh, uh, two meetings.
Two meetings.
September eleventh again?
I'm sorry?
September eleventh again?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve the applicants to be received, written request to continue the hearing till September eleventh at seven thirty P M.
We're gonna grant the request.
Grant the request, I always say approve.
We're, we're not giving him something, well, uh, yeah, we're okaying what he's asking for.
Yes.
So that, yeah, never mind, for the reason that we have, we go through this dance. Any discussion, hearing now.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Vecchitraman.
Thank you all so well.
Thank you.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner.
Aye. Motion carries. See you in four weeks, we'll have another one of these marathon. Because I have some plans this time, I mean.
We'll have ano- another Norm Hill special meeting, right?
Yeah, maybe we just, in, in the in-between Mondays, we could have Norm. I guess they've been busy at his place, okay, that brings me to. Uh, the continuation of the S P twenty twenty-three dash oh six. Special permit and uh. Site plan approval, that was already opened.
Yes.
And we have a request.
We have a written request for continuation, so I will move that the board grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing to Monday, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty P M.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion, hearing now?
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Vecchitraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner.
And I uh vote aye. Motion carries. Okay. Now back to the first page. We did that zoning updates for town meeting.
So Gabe is here from C M R P C to talk through the draft of the M B T A community zoning, um. Uh, we did, I did meet with Gabe, um, and Dave to talk through and make some edits, so the version that you're seeing uploaded to the materials is. The product of that meeting, um, we, I'll, I'll turn it over to Gabe so that he can get, um, he's been waiting long enough, uh, so I'll let him have a chance.
It's okay.
And then, um, we can go through questions from there, so I will.
Yeah. You want us to share it?
Yes, yep.
Cool, cool. Yeah, thanks for having me, guys, um. I'll walk through this, um, thanks to the work of, especially Dave for helping me and Fiona kind of focus this. I think, um, this isn't a really good place and it just requires a bit of input from the board. Oh. Okay. So I think, um. Yeah, so as, as we've discussed in past meetings, um, we are basing compliance with the M B T A zoning law off of us. Primary, except, except for one of the five districts, basically we can achieve compliance entirely through existing zoning. Basically, we've looked at the compliance model that was provided by the state and I think the town is already in a really good spot. The purpose of this bylaw is to both establish compliance, um, through the modification of one of the sub-districts that we're looking at. And additionally, I think. Um, so you may be asking, like, if we have compliance in four of the five sub-districts, why are they included in this bylaw? I think there's kind of two purposes for that, I think the first purpose is. For the, for future, you know, future board members, future employees of Grafton to understand what this bylaw is achieved, how, how, how we achieve compliance. Um, kind of in a more formal setting, and then additionally, um, as, you know, you, we, we can talk about in the coming, you know, after this is passed. Um, I think there's some, some things we could do to these zones in the future that would go beyond compliance, that would be best accomplished through sort of a comprehensive bylaw, so something in particular. For example, mixed use, you can't require by, you can't require in the M B T A compliance districts, but, you know, theoretically you could imply, impose a, a density bonus. So that if someone built mixed use, they could get an extra story, that's something that, you know, Fiona and I are enthusiastic about doing in the future, but. For the purposes of this, we just want bare bones, uh, compliance with the state law as soon as possible. Um, so obviously this is the first, uh, the first section, uh, section A establishing, uh, just the purpose of the bylaw. I think the primary one is to, um, obviously achieve compliance, I. The one or more purposes section is really up to the planning board for what to include in that. When you bring that to town meeting, um, I think that's a good section if you want to, you know, educate the audience. So Fiona, there was, um, were you able to get in touch, uh, with Judy to talk about, uh, because, because there's kind of. Because we're establishing these five overlay zones, there's kind, we had kind of a question in our last meeting about. I guess the choice would be between. Do we establish these as overlay districts that are present on the zoning map and then clarify that four of the five don't have any real zoning changes? Or do we only establish the one modified zoning district for now, was basically the, and not signify the, the new zoning districts on the map, correct?
Correct, I have not been able to sit down with her bef. Well, I was not able to before this meeting, but I do have a follow-up with her this week.
Okay, okay, so I think, I think for the time being, um, that's primarily an aesthetic question, um.
But she was, she, when I, when I could, uh, explain briefly on my way, um, uh, what, when I was following up, uh, from what, you know, we, it warrants more discussion, of course, but she, she was, uh. Saying the former.
So establishing, so I think that what we're leaning towards in the bylaw is establishing five new overlay districts. And then clarifying in the bylaw that most of the provisions of this bylaw are only applying to, um, what is it, the V M U South Grafton portion.
Yes, I don't want, you know. Uh, put words in her mouth or anything, it does want a follow-up discussion, but yes, that was the safest and, you know, clearest and clearest option from.
And, and I think, um, if anyone from the board also wants to jump in, if Da- Dave, if you have any input as well, I think, I think that option makes sense. For purposes of future flexibility, to have those districts on the books. Rather than, you know, and built, you know, obviously you can change anything in the zoning down the road, but having them existing is kind of. I guess a bit of insurance. Um, I guess, should we move on to the next section? All right, so this is really where it gets more interesting, um, like I said, so this is all coming from the state. This is heavily modified from what the state provided as their compliance, uh, bylaw, um, again, Grafton is a. Um, again, Grafton is in a really fortuitous position with regards to this bylaw in that you have a lot of the existing zoning for compliance. This bylaw, I think, was primarily written for towns that have very little or non-existent compliance. And so if you look up the the sample bylaw online, it is much more thorough, but we were able to delete several sections, which is a good thing. Just to eliminate redundancies. I'll just try to be quick with this unless there's any comments. So obviously, the, we're establishing, um, the M C M O D is the title that came from the state. The, uh. Basically, this is setting the standards for M C M O for multifamily housing in in these overlay districts. Again, it's an overlay district, so. And again, going off of compliance. All the compliance around dimensions and other provisions was basically in line with what the state is looking for. Um, so it's deferring to the compliance to to the underlying zoning for dimensions. Like I said, we're we are establishing five new sub districts, um, which the board, I think, has seen in some form at some point. We're looking at North Grafton Transit Village, part part of the forty R. V R V M U D R one B, which, um. Is part part of the V M U South Grafton. Um, again, that is going to be the primary focus of this bylaw is establishing. Establishing a couple of things in V M U South Grafton. Then Fisherville Smart Growth Growth Overlay District, um, Five Millennium Drive and seventeen twenty seven Upton Street. And again. Like, and then the fourth clause, the underlying zoning of one, three, four, and five are fully compliant with section three and is not going to change. Um, the primary purpose of this document is to adjust the affordability levels for section three A compliance in M C M O D two. The degree to which that affordability will change is subject to an ongoing, uh, project to study the feasibility of affordability requirements in that district. For context, um, one of the, uh, one of the provisions of the three A zoning law is that it defaults to ten percent affordability. At eighty percent area median income. Which, you know, I think for most people is not, that's not really where Grafton is at in terms of mandating affordability. It is below what. What we've traditionally seen in the bylaws in Grafton. Um, but because you have existing zoning that is in compliance. You don't need to, you can, you don't have to change that, but in the case of V M U South Grafton, it's gonna have to change. Um, or it might, we'll see. The feasibility study, we'll leave it up in the air, but my guess is it will be somewhere between like ten and twenty percent. Um, at eighty percent A M I. Um, this section is definitions. Again, there was a massive, like, two pages of definitions that came from the sample bylaws from the state. We, I basically deleted all the ones that were either redundant because they're already, they're, you know, stuff like multifamily housing is already defined in your bylaws. And we can change that to E O H L C. Um, I I I guess this was written with the idea that they were gonna change the name in like two months. But yeah, so these are all, um, I just tried to keep it to things that might be. Might be useful for the specific bylaw. And so permitted uses, uh, per basically. All the all the underlying zoning district uses are allowed or disallowed. Um, including multifamily zoning, which multifamily housing, which is allowed by right in all the districts we're looking at. Um, and then basically the second clause. Is intended to just establish that. Basically, you need to look at the underlying zoning for all the specifics. Um, of what of what you're gonna put into, uh, any of these M C M O D, uh, districts.
If I may just jump in game really quick, this was, this was an important, um, consideration when we're having this conversation, and I think. If the board is is particularly uncomfortable or concerned with this verbiage, we should talk through it now. Um, I know, uh, you know, it 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 basically is. As Gabe said. A catchall in terms of referencing the underlying zoning and making sure we cover our bases, um, but if the, I just would like the board to. Speak up if they do have some, or, you know, foresee any issues with the way that this is worded. And Gabe, I did notice that I left that comment in about, it looks like this was from the Fisherville. Language from the bylaw, the reference to section ten, so that's why I had included when. My first review about it, uh, including section thirteen.
Okay.
But if we're using the, if we're superimposing, um, the district and but, uh. You know, you having this language that we're using the underlying zoning in Romania in full force and effect, do we need to get into this level of detail with referencing?
I don't think, I don't think so.
Right, that, yeah, I think that's something we should, the board, the board should weigh in on now as well.
I think that last sentence is. Appropriate, it it comes from a forty R. Section ten and thirty. It comes from a forty R and there's good reason for it to be there on a forty R. For this, where we are just modifying parameters of an existing village mixed use district, I I don't see that this last sentence is applicable. Because the the reason, the reason for this is forty R is that the forty R is basically a whole different set of rules. Which, if you're gonna do a forty R project, you don't have to. Deal with the underlying zoning, and that's not the case here.
Right, right, exactly. And that's why when we, you know, when we are using. The language from our existing forty R bylaws, I would just want to be very careful about. How we structure to make sure that we're not getting our lines crossed.
Yeah. I I I might. Scrutinize this myself. We really can't do this in real time, but take another look at that to. I I'll I'll take another look at that and see if, see if I can see anything else in there that doesn't seem to fit. With what we're doing here.
Right, and the next step after our discussion this evening and making the tweets to, uh, tweaks to the zoning, um, will be. The hearing for. Town meetings, we're getting toward that time. So I just want to make sure that. We, you know, we we allow ourselves.
So so with this and the other zoning things we'll be talking about, we're. We're. Aiming to have. Zoning bylaw warrant articles ready to be placed on the warrant.
Right, right, that's the goal.
And. We'll have to think about the timing of this a little bit. I, I I know from discussions with Evan regarding my bylaw work. That the select board is likely to be closing the warrant on or about September nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. Okay, that's good to know.
So that that's sort of a hard and fast deadline. We really have to have all our ducks in a row by then. We also have to take into account. Uh, the scheduling requirements for our public hearing on the warrant articles, which. Require the prerequisite to that is we have to have submitted them to the warrant. So we may, we may be, we may have a deadlines earlier than the nineteenth. I don't remember off the top of my head what our schedule requires. Involve the advertising for the hearings and everything.
I I, yes, I was under the impression that it was September one was the absolute last day.
Probably about right for these. It means next, next meeting will be our last opportunity to. Tweak these.
Right, right.
It's always, uh. Worse than we think.
Yes.
I mean, that that's a. Every time, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, the board provides. Their com, you know, we have a good discussion now and then by the next meeting, we can. Fine tune and. Be teed up and ready to go. But I mean, uh, with, as, you know, not to keep taking over, Dave, but a- a- as with.
That's helpful.
All of the. The work that's been done, I mean, the the because of the way the Grafton zoning is structured, it does make this actually a. Significantly ea- uh, easier feat than some other of our, uh, you know. Municipal municipalities in central mass and across the Commonwealth. We are lucky in that regard, but. But still, so, thanks.
Moving along?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is, um, establishing some dimensional standards, um, across the M C M O D. I think mo- the multifamily unit density, I think, is more of a clarification for the public. Again, as I, as we, as you may probably all know, to us, uh, achieving compliance with the law. Is primarily focused on allowing by right up to fifteen units per acre, and that is averaged across the entire compliance, uh, district. Um, so. There's that. We're also establishing that lots may have more than one principal building. And that mul- and that dimensional requirements will be computed based on the project rather than a single building. And that multifamily lots need to follow existing provisions in the bylaw and not be in contradiction. Height requirements, again, we're deferring to the underlying zoning. And then, um. And then also we're establishing that site plan review authority or special permit granting authority may waive heightened setback requirements. Um, to accommodate the installation of renewable energy projects. So this is really the meat of the bylaw, um, and thankfully it is only four provisions down from a very, like a two-page one that came from the state. So again. The primary purpose at the end of the day of establishing this is to. Give us a place to modify, easily modify the affordability requirements for a portion of B M U South Grafton to comply with state law. As you can see from Fiona's notes. Um, the only change. Is gonna end up being to the affordability percentage. The rest of the parameters are not going to change from the underlying zoning. And a feasibility analysis is going to determine, um, if we want ten percent or twenty percent of an affordability requirement. Again, we don't want to rewrite the book on how to do a site plan review, so. This is brief. Standard boilerplate severability bylaw. Yeah, that's it. So. Yeah, you guys are in a really good spot with this. I think going into town meeting, we just are gonna wanna tweak a couple of things. And I think. Are you, are you gonna want me on the September eleven meeting?
Gabe, I think that will probably be past our time. We'd like to have, I, everything. You know, basically done by September one. Um, if we do. Need to coordinate for the twenty eighth.
Okay.
I will do that. Um, it doesn't seem like anything sticks out too much this evening, and honestly, with the way, you know, as I've mentioned, it was a. Lighter lift compared to some, some pile writing, so. Um, so, yeah, I think that what we can do is basically factor in any, any comments. I'm gonna be working on town meeting coordination with more for warrant articles anyway. And then maybe we can have a. Uh, potentially, you know, brief.
Yeah, if we want to meet before the end of next week, um, if you wanna just get this ready for the twenty eighth, I, you know, not to. I I do kind of agree. I don't think I need to be there, um, at this point. Yeah, I feel like this is in a really good spot and. Really, we just need some tweaks that I think you and I and, uh, potentially Dave can handle pretty easily.
Right, and it's everything that we've covered this evening, um, and probably some, you know, formatting and basic things like that, which is, yeah, staff can can handle that, so. Yeah, so let's, um, let's move forward internally bec- um, because the content is going to. Remain unchanged. Obviously, the E F A, uh, analysis is will is going to dictate. First, um, affordability percentages, et cetera. So we obviously cannot do that right now, but. We should be able to have that analysis done by the. By, uh, the twenty twentieth or twenty first of August. So that's about underway. Okay, and I'm sorry, Gabe, was there any other ma- uh, any, there's nothing ma- major that I'm I'm missing?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, like, like I said, you guys are in a really strong place of compliance already. Frankly, like, if it wasn't for the affordability stuff, you probably wouldn't even have to do a new bylaw. And, uh.
Okay, great.
And and then I think we'll also, um. We'll talk, I'll, I'll reach out to Matt at C M R P C tomorrow. Um, if we, once we determine how we want to approach establishing the districts, um, we can also have a zoning map change ready for warrant. So that we can, um. I I guess if you want that for warrant or or not.
Yes, we would, yep, and and Matt actually sent me, um. Matt sent me today. So they, it was uploaded to the meeting materials a little bit later, so that's. Apologies there. Um, let me just actually try and get it in Adobe so people. See it. One second. I think Matt was away, so it was.
Yeah, yeah, Matt was on vacation last week, so we probably would have had it ready for tonight. He works fast.
He does, he does. So that's just loading.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I'm, I'll zoom in once the. Processes, but it is, you can see the neon. Lines that delineate the the districts that we're looking at. The computer is working a little bit slowly, but you can see seventeen and twenty seven Upton here. And he had, he was using the, um, shape files as as recent as September twenty twenty two, and I already reviewed this and had no concerns. Oh goodness, it's quite slow, isn't it? Let me see if I can pull it up, um.
Your zoning is too powerful.
Yes. We're just, we're so good at zoning. All right, let's see. Yes, this is better. So you can see. The areas that we were talking, you know, five millennium, which we were talking about earlier. Obviously, we have our North Grafton Transit Village Overlay, which is also known as a pine. We have our seventeen and twenty seven Upton. We have our. Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District, and then we have our V M U South Grafton or portion thereof, which will be the. Which will is the focus of. The draft zoning really and what what will be changing. Ever so slightly. If any, if if nobody on the board has any comments or concerns, I think we can. Let Gabe go.
Yeah, the only thing to pay attention to here is the five millennium. Because the boundaries of the five millennium drive parcel, which is what's currently drawn on here. Are not exactly the boundaries of the proposed zone. So we'll have to update that at some point.
And I believe he did say earlier that they were, they were under agreement with.
Yes.
Right, so that might.
So, and in fact. Even if the property transfer is not completed. That's still the proposed zone.
Right.
So the boundary of the proposed zone includes that parcel that is to be transferred. That transfer may or may not take place prior to the October town meeting. There will, there will be an A and R coming to us on that at some point. Uh, but we can define the zone over that even before the property boundary changes.
I don't think it would hurt if that zone gets passed with the little bit added little bump, even if we don't have that bump.
Right, and and in fact, if that property transfer never takes place. We can still define the boundary of the zone that way because zone boundaries are not constrained to align with property boundaries. Which is sometimes a problem. And as a completely side note, uh, the town of Franklin. Where my kids reside. Has been for the last several years. Modifying zoning boundaries to coincide with property boundaries.
Well, we, one place that that rule comes in is we go back five hundred feet. From X Y Z street, which cuts through the middle of, uh, some some places like Coopman's.
Yes, we.
And Stop and Shop, I think.
Yes, I think there, there are a number of our zones that are measured that way. Which sometimes is not a problem, but sometimes is.
Otherwise, it's a center line of the street when, uh. Typical, just the typical math. Okay. It is nine thirty, so let's. Do what we're doing.
Move along then. Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening, guys.
Next one, Dave? Or is, is this, is this Dave sort of doing these?
Um, it is, it is me, but Gabe, uh, I'm sorry, Dave has been uh obviously a wonderful, uh, an asset in all things, especially. Especially with um, the, this one, um, so the proposed changes to the. Um, section five point ten point two definitions. This is a relatively uh easier lift as well. Um, the, we went before. I'm just pulling it up, sorry. We went before town meeting, um, October twenty twenty two. And received comments regarding uh the marijuana modifications that we made, um, minor. But important nonetheless. Uh, I, uh, Dave had been um, hel- helping me um, make sure that I have the, the most recent language. I was using the, um, I used all of the uh original edits and this is the complete finalized clean version. Which basically shows the changes um, that we need to make for definition marijuana retailer and offsite mar- medical marijuana. Dispensary. Um, so rel- relatively light, um, you can see the comments, uh, I'm sorry, the, the edits in green. Here, and then what we are redacting in red.
Yep, so the first one is we are simply matching our definition of marijuana retailer with the definition in the CCC regs. The definition we put in a year ago matched the, the statute.
Yes, okay, yep, yep.
And, and I've, in fact, I, I, I looked at both and I, and I thought it was simpler to match the statute. But the AG would, AG thinks it would be better for us to match the regs, so that's what we do. Also, last year, I overlooked the fact that there was no longer a nonprofit requirement for the offsite medical marijuana dispensary. AG caught that, I missed it. We have to do these again.
Right, right.
Yeah, all I'll say is, I don't like the term white label, but I'm happy to match the rest.
It is defined in the CCC regs.
Yeah, exactly.
As is repackage. They define a whole host of terms that we don't, for which we don't repeat the definition in our bylaw.
Okay, if no one has any questions, concerns, thoughts, I am going to move on to the next one. Um, we've already discussed the forty hour application, so I'm just going to um continue going. This is um. Another light lift. So all of these uh modifications that are proposed this evening, uh, the building department. Did weigh in as well, so I did get their opinions before. Bringing, bringing it before the board to make sure from an enforcement perspective that everything would check out and if there was. Sections of the bylaw that needed to be looked at and uh, you know, coterminous with what we're talking about this evening. That we made sure that we did that, so. Um, this is the um, we, we wanna focus on outdoor dining and allowing for seasonal outdoor dining because we've had. A s- great interest, obviously since COVID, this is nothing, nothing new to this board and the way that we were doing it before um was through, you know, a minor um. Modification process or modifying an existing special permit, um, or using the mechanisms that, that we could. But now that we, we wanna be able to codify it and reference the um appendix A. So businesses can, can choose to, you know, um, pursue outdoor dining uh on a seasonal basis through either a special permit or a. Um, site plan review. So uh, the, upon conferring with the zoning enforcement officer, this is, was this. You know, the, the um, what we landed on, so happy to, to talk through that. Assess any concerns. We did wanna do special permit in the VMU. Um, just to, you know, because there's a, a lot more diversity in uses and parcel types, so.
So I'll, I'll say, you know, two things. And one, so far, we've been doing it as temporary orders, you know, that we've been proving. So that they're, you know, time stand, time limited. At the high level, I agree with special permit for doing, you know, outdoor dining, you know, stuff. I think we need to have that, you know, discretion. Because each type of use and location is gonna be different. That said, I am a little, at least mentally concerned with reducing the by right for the village mixed use. You know, for the, uh, for the, you know, for food preparation itself. You know, that said, you know, we're not necessarily removing the possibility, so I'm not strongly against that if this is the cleanest, you know, way to do it. But I, if there was a clean way to say, you know, if you wanna have seasonal outdoor, you need a special permit. But if you're just doing non, you know, no outdoor, then it's still by right. That would be, you know, my pre- preference.
Yeah, you would do that by adding another line to the use table.
Yeah, that's what I was kinda thinking.
And that's not particularly difficult to do. Unless you really be followed with working with the word, Microsoft Word tables, which are not the easiest thing to work with.
They can be a little challenging, but.
Just adding a line to the table would, would deal with that.
That, that's what I was just thinking. You're, you're taking away, significantly taking away the by reg part and uh. It might be easier to not worry about that and just handle outdoors different than indoors.
Okay, so tease out a separate line item altogether saying just seasonal outdoor dining and have, and keeping the. The, um, other than the village mixed use.
And, and you can figure out whether you renumber the one below it, so that it can go in there or whether you. I'll let someone else worry about that.
Or do something like for A and B, you know, even.
I don't know whether we have A's and B's, but let's let somebody do that when we're not on the clock.
Right, so yeah, what the, I think, I think the way to approach it is le- leave the indoor dining is, isn't just add a row that. Basically is indoor and outdoor. In other words, one establishment can do just, they do, I, I, I don't, or, or may, or maybe. What, yeah, separating them is, is the, the point, how you do it.
And I will say, you know, though that's my preference, if we only have the option to, in terms of staff timing. To get what is proposed in front for October town meeting. I at least am okay with bringing this to town meeting versus nothing. I think we, I think having a mechanism that we can say a establishment can permanently have an outdoor. First, you know, this coming year is gonna be more beneficial than. Than the concern I have.
From my perspective, uh, you know, I don't think that that would be, you know, adding. That's a relatively minor change. Happy to do it. And I think now that we've, we've talked through it, you know, as a, um, the, the board has. I think that that will be. That'll be fine, yeah, I'm, I don't think it'll can, um, pose an issue in terms of timing. So just so I am completely clear, separate line item that talks about only out, seasonal outdoor dining and leave the. The, the line as it, uh, the, regarding uh indoor dining intact. And just change the, um, add, add a separate line underneath for outdoor and keep. Keep the same allowances that were for indoor, so keep VMU as by right.
Yeah, I, I think the. High level is, if it is gonna be seasonal outdoor dining, we want to have a special permit. The exist, the pre-existing, you know, food establishment in VMU should have the same use that it was, as in there today. As of the existing bylaws.
Okay, yes, okay, got it.
And I, I hate to ask, but I wonder if requiring. Having a separate thing about. Special permit for outdoor, not just the basic use, but this is a.
Accessory use thought?
Never mind. I think, I think the indoor dining people should still have what they have now. And if somebody wants outdoor, then they have to have a special permit in those zones.
Alrighty, there is a, there are, um, it is by site plan only in the neighborhood business and uh. Commercial business zones, but that's. Makes sense in those areas. So I just wanted to make, make sure that that was everywhere else other than the residential. Uh, the R forty and the R twenty districts are a special permit. And neighborhood business and commercial businesses.
I don't have an offhand thought against that, but I don't have a strong preference.
I guess my question is i- i- if the board were to evaluate the benefits of a site plan review process versus a special permit. But I think it seems like what I'm hearing is seasonal outdoor dining should be special permit.
Now, we have been, this may or may not be something we'd wanna carry forward, well, we, we have been handling the outdoor dining. On a basis that is sort of approximately like a site plan review. It's been a more informal process, but the way we've been doing it looks more like a site plan review than a special permit.
Maybe you wanna have an asterisk that says. Consult with the planning board if, for lessened requirements. Basically, what they, what they would do is come in and say, gee, uh, we don't know, we. We don't really need all that for, you know, the site, the, the, the plans and the traffic study and all that. And, and in each case, I suppose, decide that there might be a case where, you know, something is needed and, you know, something isn't. But you do need some plans that make it clear. Where all the parking spaces are and all that. Uh, and the counts. That's gonna be, that's gonna be, uh, cause you, you gotta be able to cover the. If, if it's temporary outdoor, which it probably is. Uh, you know, you put up a tent in the summertime, but you take it down and you use your indoor capacity.
I think I'll just say as well, just, you know, probably not for this town meeting, but I'm okay with the idea that. It may not even need to be seasonal outdoor as far as the, you know, to come before, before us for this. I think. We, there might be a case to allow someone to say, we wanna have, you know, partly year round outdoor. We're gonna put, you know, space, you know, like. You know, propane space heaters or whatever in the wintertime, so people can still sit outside and enjoy it. I don't s- I, I haven't heard anyone looking to do that yet, you know, so I'm not, I'm not rushing it for this, you know, town meeting. It'd be a harder sell anyway.
So, um, if you want it temporary, uh, i- if you wanna just do it in the summertime. You have this rule, and I guess since that's temporary, um, you can't get a permit for permanent outdoor dining. May need a, a couple more thought cycles. Um, it's quarter to ten.
Yeah, I think the, the pr- the problem we're adri- wanted to address here is seasonal outdoor.
Yes, that's, that's, that's our biggest short term.
I don't think outdoor is allowed at all, except with what we've been doing, is it?
There's no provisions for it.
Unless, unless you, unless the category of other eating and drinking establishments could be said to cover that. Because the previous category is for indoor, specifically for indoor consumption. And if it's not indoor consumption, and it's not drive-through, it's other.
Right, and, and the zoning enforcement officer, cause I had asked that exact same question and said, well, can, can technically and. You know, we, I, we, uh, conferring with him, you know, we need to be explicit about separating the outdoor. Because of the implications on parking and, you know, et cetera.
Let's do this and. If, if by town meeting time, we realize that we're just, we don't think it's gonna work, then. Kick the can down the road.
I, I will say that my biggest, you know, desire for this, for this town meeting is so that we can once and for all have the. People that are currently doing the outdoor seasonal come before us, you know, with the proposal, and we can make a, basically a checkmark approval. You know, for what they propose, and then years forward, they wanna keep doing it, they don't have to keep coming before us. That's kinda my thought process.
Which is what's been happening. It's been the same, like, a lot of, you know, businesses that have seen a lot of success in the summer, wanting to continue. And gotten some inquiries from, from new folks too, but, you know, it's, it's just something that I feel like we, our, you know, our department's gonna keep seeing. Get something in the, in the bylaws, so, so, okay, so I will make the changes that the board has proposed and we will move forward with that. Alright, going to keep going here. Okay, so I actually want to, I'll talk to two point one quickly because that one is significantly easier than. The uh, the, um, the other proposal, which I will explain for the board in a second. This is, uh, there has been issues with tractor trailers idling and what constitutes a tractor trailer. Um, so upon conferring with the zoning enforcement officer, looking and doing research on other bylaws. This is what we've come up with, and just, this is a simple, just addition of, um, the definition for tractor trailer. That includes. That includes a, a tractor, a trailer with or without the back unit. Because that was, I think there's been an is- issues with idling tractor trailers, but they don't have the back units and there's, well, technically, we're not a. Do, do we fall into the category or not? It's not codified, so it's hard to enforce, basically.
On the yes or no, does, do we reference tractor trailer elsewhere in the bylaws or?
There is uh, an appendix A, there is, um.
There is one reference in the accessory uses section of the use table.
Missed that when I skimmed this.
And, and is it only tractor trailers that have issues?
That is the issues that have been brought to my attention, um, because they're, uh, in terms, uh, in terms of other types of trucks or vehicles. Um, that have made as much noise, no, not, not to my, not to my knowledge.
Specifically, as there's an accessory used defined for parking of up to two registered commercial motor vehicles excluding tractor trailers. And so now we're gonna define tractor trailers to remove some ambiguity from that.
Right, exactly. It's just trying to be more clear, you know, uh. Going forward. Alrighty.
No problem there.
And last but not least, so I, um, the building department has been talking to me. About trying to get a, what they refer to as a shed bylaw through, and I think that. This was brought to the attention of the prior planner and I was hoping to try and do what I can, but I'm interested to hear from the board. My goodness, we're, sorry, I'm having sharing, uh, sharing issues. So this would be a modification of the, um, of section three point two point three point two. To include. There, there's a lot of, uh, my understanding is that there is a lot of odd lot sizes where trying to have a shed. Or some sort of accessory structure of, of nature is challenging, so the, after discussions. We proposed. Ri- um, having a footnote under, in the minimum yards for the sides and rear saying reduce to five feet. For accessory structures to one and two family principal structures. That do not occupy more than two hundred square feet. So you're basically, you know. Single family homes and duplexes can basically have a shed or similar accessory structure that's two hundred feet or less. That doesn't have to adhere to the fifteen foot side and rear setbacks because it's been challenging, I guess, for.
Can't the ZBA give a variance?
Apparently not, I'd be, I, I.
I wanna know why first.
Yeah, the. My, that's kinda along my point, but first off, you're sharing the meeting materials and not the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to point that out, but secondly, yeah, I think, given that. You know, this is a modification that requires an approval and we're not the approval authority for what this modification describes. You know, if the ZBA can't grant a variance, I think this should probably be proposed by the ZBA. As a warrant article and. And we can, we can hold a public hearing on it ourselves, but it should probably be sponsored by the ZBA, in my opinion.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
I, yeah.
Um, I, I, it worried me when I read this, uh, provided the zoning board of appeal finds. That the proposed accessory structure, blah, 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 um, but variances have. I'll argue four things, that I'll argue the law says they all have to be satisfied, you know, uh, you, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that that's always followed, but uh, at least in the old days, um, but you had to have, you know, a unique situation and uh. Whatever, not, it's inconvenient for me, and I wa- I want to be more intense, um, you have to have real.
Yeah, and the.
Conditions that don't apply to anybody, so, yeah, I think. The ZBA ought to start this.
And I, I would just add that if, the ZBA does not think this is something that they should have, you know, they should be deciding on and have an authority over. And then we can certainly hear that, hear why not, you know, and go from there, and then it wouldn't be, in my mind, worded as it's a ZBA variance. I think this falls for the ZBA and should be a ZBA thing, but I don't know enough about that, you know.
Well, I think that, yes, yes, but I, this, so the zoning, uh, the, the ZBA administrator was actually the person who. Proposed this, I, I think because of how many uh, parcels this applies to. They're getting continuous requests for variances and.
Go through all of that, cause they're gonna have to hear it and make a decision whether it's a variance or something else. And pass it to us, where we will have a, you know, have to look at it, um, I don't see.
Okay.
Tell them to, if, if, if they don't see that, tell them to talk to us.
Okay.
But, uh.
Yeah, and I think i- if ZBA's, you know, Evan's, you know, opinion was, this should be done so they can reduce their, you know, variance requests. That, this won't do that.
Okay, so I'll, um, I will touch base with, um, the ZBA. Uh, folks and as well as the ZBA administrator, and if this is, you know, this warrants more discussion and probably should get like a legal opinion and.
ZBA administrator.
The ZBA administrator as well as, yeah, yeah.
Perhaps the zoning officer?
Yes, yes, and him as well, yes.
They, they have a admin assistant.
What?
The ZBA itself has an admin assistant.
Right, 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 but, um, the zoning enforcement officer and the, um, zoning, the zoning board of appeals administrator. Met with me about this specifically, so Bob has been looped into this conversation, yes. So, yeah, I mean, it, yeah, I know, I, I'll ta- I'll take it back and, um, just say that a war, you know, it.
Yes, okay, um, I'd like us to be able to go home tonight.
I will, just for the sake of the, the fact that we're at five minutes of ten, I will move that the board vote to extend the meeting past ten o'clock. I don't see that we're gonna go very much past ten o'clock, but that's a possibility that we will.
Motion until it's been seconded on the floor.
I second it.
Now then, um, is, is, does anyone have, wanna say anything about going a little long?
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye.
So we're all done with zoning updates for tonight.
Yep.
Hmm. I will move that the board approve the bills that are lined up to be paid.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries.
We have no minutes.
Staff report.
Okay, very briefly, if you are coming to town hall tomorrow, please park in the front and away from landscaping if possible. Highly recommend parking at the high school, um, they're doing some seating and looming, so just be aware of that if you are coming to town hall. Tomorrow alone, um, I just want to continue to remind folks that, uh, we will be, um. Uh, Department of One and through, uh, August, uh, twenty fifth. So please plan accordingly, the planning department is by appointment only. Uh, we will obviously continue to take, uh, inquiries from the public, but we really strongly encourage. Folks to please, please contact us and try and schedule something so that we are, um, able to manage all of the things we have going on, which is a lot. Um, uh, other than that, we did talk about, um, a couple of other items that I was going to speak to. So I will just leave it at that, I think, um, I will be following up about town meeting zoning updates. Um, and we obviously continue to work on all of our long, long range projects with consultants. But through, between, you know, now and August twenty fifth, the priorities will be applications, current and pending. Technical assistance for the board and, you know, uh, construction management, making sure folks are adhering to their decisions, et cetera. So, um, that is all we have.
Okay, uh, anything in correspondence?
I just, the only thing I noticed that is interesting is the, you know, commentary regarding, you know, water runoff with, you know, the Nelson. You know, park that was in our correspondence, that's not really within the purview of this board in, you know, any one of the aspects that was mentioned there. But just wanted to say I found it interesting.
All right, um, anything else on that? Reports from planning board representatives and on town committees and CMR PC. Anybody?
I did, we did have our, you know. First hearing regarding CPC, the only project that's been proposed is to do some repair work. On the library cupola, because they are, it is leaking a little bit into the, you know. Renovated reading room, the historic reading room, that we had our first, you know, hearing on that CPC is expected to. Take a vote on pushing that forward to town meeting later this, you know, later this month.
Okay. That, that's held water a long time, wondered why now.
And they, they got a, they did a feasible, I'm not, a feasible, they did a. The library board of trustees, I believe it was, uh, um, friends, I. They got funding to actually do a deeper investigation into it, including, you know, a cost analysis and, you know, such they have a better. Idea of what they need to do and what's gonna cost now, and they have some in-kind funding as well.
Okay, all right, uh, anybody else with reports?
I have nothing.
Okay, are there any other items which may lawfully come before us? Hearing none.
I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, it's not debatable.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hasser.
Aye, yeah, I think if you wanted to discuss that motion. You'd, you'd have some problems.
We adjourned at about twenty seconds past ten o'clock.
Yeah, well, I knew we needed an extension.